Monday, April 29th, 2019, meeting of the Marquette City Commission is now called to order. If you will please rise with the City Commission and repeat the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, if you will please conduct the roll.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Campana?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Here.
Commissioner Smith? Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds? Mayor Stonehouse?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Reynolds is ill tonight, and Commissioner Smith is out of town. If I may have a motion to excuse them. Commissioner Schlegel?
Make the motion to excuse both for accepted reasons.
Commissioner Hill?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. Commissioners, the agenda is in front of you. I will need a motion to accept the agenda or to make changes thereto. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Commissioner Frazier, any comment?
No comment.
Commissioner Schlegel, seeing none. Any other commissioners? Seeing no other requests for comments, all those in favor of accepting the commission of accepting the agenda as written, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us to announcements. We do have a number of openings on city boards and authorities. Board of Zoning Appeals has three openings. Board of Review has three. The Brownfield Redevelopment Authority has two. Harbor Advisory Committee has one. Housing Commission has one. Investment Advisory Board has two. Local Development Finance Authority has two. Local Officers Compensation Commission has one. I would encourage folks to consider that particular committee. I think they meet once every three years. So, it's a good way to serve without serving too hard. The Marquette County Transit Authority has one opening. The Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority has one opening, and Prescott Advisory Committee has three openings. Again, I encourage everybody to please consider joining a city committee or authority. It's a wonderful way to help your city, to help us move forward. The Commission looks very heavily at getting the advice from these different committees. It's vital to how the city operates. And if you're concerned with your city and you're concerned with how we can make it better, this is a great first step for you to consider. Applications are available at the city manager's office or online. Or you can speak to any member of the Commission, and I'm sure we would be able to better explain what a particular group may do. That brings us down to boards and committees. Item number one is not on the agenda. That has been stricken. The item number two is the recognition of an outgoing member, and Teresa Hamar, are you here? Teresa, can you please step to the podium?
You did my witchery.
That's all right. Thank you.
It's a thought that counts. Teresa, on behalf of the City of Marquette, I wanted to present you with a certificate for service in what you've done. And really, maybe more important, is this absolutely official Marquette t-shirt.
This is awesome.
It is awesome, and it gives you powers of being a Superman, I think, Superwoman.
Thank you so much.
The next item up is item number four, which is reappointments.
Three.
Excuse me, number three, which is appointments, and that would be to appoint Todd Lee, Harbor Advisory Committee, for an unexpired term ending 06-03-21. Members, may I see a motion? Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Todd Lee, or Lee, to Harbor Advisory Committee for an unexpired term ending 6-1 of 21.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Any further comments? Commissioner Campana?
Just glad to see Todd come forward and be willing to serve on this committee. We appreciate his volunteering.
Mr. Frazier?
Sir.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us to item number four, reappointments, and that would be for Ann Donahue, Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees, for a term ending 05-01 of 24, and Judy Bergland, Elections Board, for a term ending 04-11 of 23, and David Reome for the Investment Advisory Board, for a term ending 04-01-22. Commissioners, your pleasure. A motion? Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Ann Donahue to the Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees for a term ending 5-1 of 24, Judy Bergland to the Elections Board for a term ending 4-11-23, David Reome to the Investment Advisory Board for a term ending 4-1-22.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Second the motion.
Commissioner Campana, any comments?
Just glad to see these people coming back for more.
And...
Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Schlegel?
That's it, thank you.
All those commissioners in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. Public comments. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when addressing the Commission. Ma'am?
Hi, Colleen Roberts, 903 Adams Street. And I wanted to get up here while everybody's in a good mood, okay? I remember at the last meeting, you are now negotiating with NTN about property going on 553 and on Division Street, and I would like to know, how much footage does it take for a two-lane street or road? I would like to suggest that at one end of it, we would negotiate to have a street there, and on the other end of it, on Division Street, to have a street there, so that parcel 3300 would not be landlocked. But, there's a reason, because there's always a reason behind everything. I think Marquette, the City of Marquette and the citizens of Marquette deserve and would like a year-round dog park. And I think that area 3300, that is too large a parcel for a dog park. But, if you were to split that up a little bit, I think that would be an excellent area for a dog park for the citizens of the City of Marquette, if we had entrances and exits to it. And now, I am the owner of a spoiled, small, older dog. So, I would really like to see a little section for little ones under 25 pounds, and a section for big dogs to run. Now, everybody's in a good mood, so I hope down the road, everybody thinks about this, okay? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else to address?
Good evening. My name's Matt Tredo with U.P. Engineers and Architects, 2 Grove Hill Court. I'd just like to reserve time on Agenda Item Number 17, License to Use City Right-of-Way at 1209 North Third Street, to address any questions or concerns that the Commission may have. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. Margaret Brum, 404 East Magnetic Street. I'd like to reserve time to speak on Item Number 12.
Kate Levenduski, 1912 Waldo Street. I guess I didn't know I needed to do this, but reserving time for Item Number 16.
I'm sorry, did you give your physical name?
I did, Kate.
And the address?
1912 Waldo.
Okay, my apologies then.
Hi, my name is Teresa Bernard, and I would like to have time to address Number 14,
I'm Lynn Berry, and I'd like to reserve time for Item 14, and I'm at 901 Champion.
Frank Jeffereau, 50 East Ridge, Marquette, to speak on Items 10, 14, 18. These are my opinions. We thank this board for adopting my suggestion to place public comment ahead of hearings and presentations. Public comment should also precede approval of the agenda and appointments. We ought to have input on who's appointed, especially when the Commission's been accused of loading boards to procure big-money votes. Two more meetings in a row, cameras were out. They're down so much, we need better models installed at the company's expense. They broke their end of the contract by not equipping us with the equipment that's suited for the task. Any manager with a backbone can arrange this or have our attorney pursue action. We spent too many tax dollars to end up with a can of worms. Please spend our money like it's your own. Lately, residents were able to ask questions and receive answers during public comment. Is there a change in the procedure, or are certain citizens afforded opportunities that others aren't? April 8th, we discussed an office co-sharing business, an ingenious concept. The well-attended meeting was mentioned, however, the vast majority of the time, the prime space in front is empty or barely occupied. A coffee shop is recommended, not only to better use this largely wasted space, but to help us collaborate, which is why the place exists at this perfect location, but let us better utilize the storefront. Graffiti was also brought up. The manager said the beautification folks are involved, which is commendable. In the meantime, though, the culprits were caught. We need to run them through the courts quickly, so they can be mandated to remove all the graffiti across town. Let them remove every trace of it. Mr. Stonehouse said Hartwood was purchased for one reason, recreation. Why then is so much slated for building, especially being the original news release read, quote, "The Commission voted March 17, 2005, to purchase 2,373 acres of undeveloped property for $5 million." Opportunity for future development of up to 356 acres also exists. Despite my mention of this then and since, this board continues to pretend the document never existed, a living lie. Instead of adhering to the original intent, a loaded A-hoc committee was formed to vote on the side of development. Perhaps Mr. Stonehouse will divulge the truth. He's been involved a long time and undoubtedly recalls the news release. Speaking of truth, Mr. Frazier suggested a third time that I somehow insulted someone's family member, yet he has no idea of what was said. Ask him. He has no clue. He's of the same ilk as his buddy on 340 East Ridge, who can strip a bluff, impede a sidewalk, and let his litter blow unchecked onto his neighbors' properties. The same attitude of entitlement Mr. Frazier so evidently has.
Anyone else to address the Commission?
Stuart Rhett Delaney, I go by Rhett, 1024 South Lake Street, here in Marquette. I have two items that I'd like to mention just briefly. One is, when the railroad was pulled out, and the bike path was passed and put in, while they were putting it in, they guaranteed us that we would be able to park in the space between the road and the path. And then bang, boom, bang, when it was done, there was no parking restrictions on the whole street. I have spoken to Dave Capana, and I know what boards to start to talk to about this, but I wanted you aware of the fact that many people are upset, and I know you don't want a whole big bunch of cars there, like happens on the Fourth of July, but that could be dealt with in another way. We need a place to park. Also, at the same time the bike path went in, they requested that any people that are plowing snow across it over to dump, stop doing it. We were allowed to do it before, and we were always asked, two weeks before the dog sled race, to stop and not to resume till two weeks after, which we did. This past winter, in front of my house, if we'd had one more storm, if we'd had the St. Patty's Day, or like the one we had in April, there would have been no place left to push the snow. In the past, we pushed it over, so it drops over the bank, and that's that. I just want you to consider these things. I'm going to talk to the parking, or whoever people we were talking to, I talked to the police officer, when they meet, to see about that problem. Problem number two is this business about the hotel and the apartments for the lower-income people, whereas I think the apartments for low-income people is a very good idea. I wonder why we think we need to put another hotel down there. This town has almost as many hotels as Ishbremi Nagani, and most of the ones around, added together. I don't... One reason might be that the buyer needs that hotel to make money. Maybe that's the case. Maybe the other case is, that I'd like to know, is are they going to get a big tax exemption for a number of years, like the past developers there have gotten? It has irked these lower-income people no end, especially those in South Marquette and down by where I live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Arshambo, and I live at 901 Champion Street, and I'd like to reserve time to talk about the development agreement on Founder's Landing. Thank you.
What's your name? I'm sorry, I missed the last name.
Arshambo.
Arshambo, okay.
Hi, Shelley Russell, 906 Champion Street. Hi, Fred. And I'd like also to talk about the Item 14, the development on Founder's Landing.
Anyone else to address the Commission? Seeing none, public comment is closed. That brings us to Item Number Five, Presentation, and that will be the guardian of the quarter by the Children's Museum. Before anybody has a chance to say anything, as Mayor of Marquette, I want to shake your hands, and I want to give you this certificate for your leadership of the Children's Museum, because we all appreciate that in the city.
Thank you.
Maybe on a committee?
[laughing].
Oh, the most important part?
Yes.
Commissioner Reynolds always does this every meeting, and she is ill tonight, but she arranged with Commissioner Schlegel to pick this up. So you have a cupcake. Which is probably more important than shaking.
For now, for now. I just want to say a few words about Levi here. At the museum, Levi is our Pied Piper. When he's at the museum, on the floor volunteering, all the younger children follow him around, and he makes up games for them to play, and he helps them interact with the animals in a positive and educational manner. If he's not on the floor, he is down in the store, helping staff members admit guests in, or sell the beverages and snacks we have, or making sure our price tag gun works. We at the museum are very proud and lucky to have Levi. And I am proud to see him finally get this award. We've had this a secret for months, and he just found out after school today that he's getting it. So, thank you very much.
Our next item is Number Six, and that's the Marquette Junior Wildcats 8U White Division Hockey Team, the 2019 Michigan Amateur Hockey Association State Champions. Here they come. Let me explain what you're seeing. The Marquette Junior Hockey Program is very proud of their 8U hockey program. The junior hockey adopted the USA Hockey American Development Model approximately seven years ago. The American Development Model Program focuses on high-intensity, high-repetition, skill-based practices during the week, with weekend half-ice games catering to roughly 60 children. This year was exceptional, with Marquette placing four teams in the semifinals of the Houghton Tournament, all six teams in the quarterfinals of the Calumet Tournament, and three teams in the semifinals of the Marquette Tournament. The junior hockey entered four teams comprised of roughly two-thirds of the program in the 8U State Tournament held in Kalamazoo this past March. The boys' team was entered into the red, white, and blue divisions, as well as an all-girls team in the white division. Marquette junior hockey teams were quarterfinalists in the red, state champions in the white, and the runner-up in the blue division. And tonight, we are recognizing the 8U White Division Champions. Is there any doubt in anybody's mind why Marquette is hockeyville? So... On behalf of the City of Marquette, we'd like to present you with the certificate of achievement for the team, for the Marquette Junior Wildcats, the 2019 Michigan Amateur Hockey Association 8U White Division State Champions.
Thank you.
And we have equal certificates for each member of your team. And you'll look for better next year. Why don't we give it all, boys, on the way down? Great job, fantastic. See you next year. Item Number Seven, the Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, by Nina Van De N.
Well, that's a tough act to follow.
We'll get there.
But I really do enjoy seeing Northern getting more involved with our youth sports in town, and I just think that's great. I'm on the Traffic Advisory Committee. We meet the third Tuesday of every month at 5:00 p.m. in the Police Department. We were established in 1978, and our mission was updated in 2014. We conduct 12 meetings a year. And by the way, I'm standing in for Walt Anderson, so these are Walt's slides, not mine. And these are just... This is just a list of who's on the committee, when we were appointed, and the expiration date, so you can look at those if anybody wants to get involved with our committee. There was a vacant seat that's being filled, but as you can see, there's some expiring, so we welcome people to get involved with us. It's a nice group. I can let you guys read our mission. I don't have to read it to you. I'll reinforce that we're an advisory committee, so we don't make, you know, major changes to the city. The city did recently have a major traffic study done, so we, you know, were informed about the study, and we advise on that, and we mainly answer a lot of questions when citizens come in, like Rhett. So Rhett, it'd be great if you could come to our meeting. We'd love to have you there. It's a perfect example of the things that we talk about at our meetings. So this is our accomplishments this last year. You guys can, you know, you can probably have already looked at that. Again, we advise, we don't make a ton of changes on our own. And we learn a lot, too, what streets are regulated by what entities. So for example, McQuillan, with the light at Grove and McQuillan, that was instituted as a result of the traffic study, but it was also part of MDOT. That whole strip there is part of MDOT. So, we make recommendations. For example, when the light went in, it was too long green going north and south, so we had Mike Lorilla make some adjustments there, because he's part of our committee as well. That's the accomplishments the past two years. We work with the DDA, and again, that's another entity that kind of controls Third Street and Washington. This is like microscopic. Again, we review the traffic study, and these are problem intersections, where you see 2018 US 41 in Washington, and there's comedy denominators, mainly being Washington Street. So, thinking of where Family Video is and Lincoln, you know, that's another tricky one to get through at times. But these are all on our radar, and they're, you know... Some of these may have roundabouts coming. That's all on the city website, okay? Goals for the upcoming year, review the new street lighting system, where we got new streetlights around town, and consider the traffic impact for the new hospital, and continue to increase the public service announcements about pedestrians and kind of sharing the road kind of stuff. Work with the zoning and planning committee as well, and we would like to see a traffic study done in the summer of Lake Shore Boulevard, because it's much, much different than in the winter, obviously, because a major portion of it is closed down. And how can we better accommodate winter pedestrians? So this is, I believe, over near Altamont Street going up toward Bothwell. You can see the bus in the far distance. So, we have some issues there. There's a sidewalk part of the way, and there's, you know... So, these are the kinds of things that we look at in the works. This is going into Econo Foods, and this was a great example, too, of something that was brought to our committee by a citizen that was concerned. There's a lot of foot traffic that walks up into Econo, and as you can see, there's no sidewalk here, and in the winter, it's much worse. And so, you know, Mike reviewed with us that, you know, is that owned by Econo, or is that owned by the city? So, that was an example, and that is a city road. And so, we're looking into making it better there for pedestrians. So, we do listen to people. Another big thing for us is connectivity of the streets. So a good example of that would be between Bothwell and Superior Hills. You know, there's like a two-track, two-rut road that I think used to be a road there many years ago, but there's, you know, a problem with some of our streets connecting in Marquette. So looking at connectivity is an important thing to us. Big issue upcoming, we'll be looking at traffic patterns with the shift over to the new hospital, of course. This is also probably going to be an issue when this condo is in, or whatever that... I'm sorry, whatever that building is to the right of all this multi-use building. When that is up and running, you know, this intersection is tricky, because as it says there on the sign, Berra Street, traffic doesn't stop, and we all know that, but a lot of people don't that come and visit, so it's a tricky intersection. Does anybody have any questions?
Commissioners, please. Commissioner Frazier?
Guys do a great job. You do a lot of work.
Thank you.
You guys bust your butt and do a lot.
Thank you.
I mean, got a little bit of work going on, but I've talked to city about, you know, maybe, we do, when we take a tour of the city, they talk about maybe why putting Washington Street by the park back to four lane, and the fire department likes it as is, because that way they can get by at the Y2. The city likes it as is because it's safer, you know, but I know a lot of people have the business on that street. They have a problem getting out, you know. We'll see what happens, and I know some people live on the corner of... Ultimately, even ripped up. I've seen a lot of traffic, you know, up from Seventh Street going back to the highway is fine.
Right.
But traffic coming down Fisher Street, those who live on Fisher Street, half-term, they can't get out, because it's traffic's backed up, and it's... And I talked to Mike and Captain Lorilla, but, you know, they said, just, let's see what happens when the hospital goes up. Your idea of Lake Shore, another traffic study is a good idea? Like, you know, the traffic study would be done, maybe when the hospital gets up and running, something like that.
Sure. We've recommended another traffic study, which I think is... Happens on a regular basis, anyway. We'd like to see another one, you know, a little bit after the hospital goes in.
Yeah, whatever gets going, I agree. It's just something to keep an eye on, just get everything going, and...
Yes.
If you need a roundabout, just ask Gary, he can pay for one. If you need a roundabout, just ask Gary, he can pay for one.
Any other questions?
You do have an interesting committee. You do useful and productive things, and so I think, as you say, a good committee to get on. The only question I have is, in the summertime, you have these street crossing posts.
Yes.
I hope you're going to continue with them in different areas, high-traffic crossing areas, like down by the Veerling in particular and elsewhere.
Okay, I can speak to that. So the DDA runs those ones by the Veerling and on Third Street, and they started with this idea, and I really like the idea as well. I think we got word that they're going to be removed now, right, Dave? Or Mike?
On Third.
Just on Third, okay. And then, so after those went in, we, as a committee, put some in on Wright Street, where the bike path crosses Wright Street by the cemetery, and then we put one down by where the Big Bay Road comes down to Holly Street, on the bottom of that hill there, where the bike path crosses. And then we did another one over by Picnic Rocks, kind of by Lakeview Arena, where that crosswalk is. So that was money donated from the Marquette Marathon, by the way, and those signs are pretty expensive. They're about $350 apiece, and they get hit a lot. So it's meant to just encourage people to slow down a little bit and look for pedestrians. It's not a state law, which Blake Gribold taught me, to stop, but you have to yield because originally I got signs that said stop, so I had to return them. It's Michigan law that if somebody's already in the crosswalk, you have to yield. Now, as a pedestrian, they cannot jump out in front of you, you know, if they're already there. But thank you, Dave. Anybody else?
Thanks, and thank Walt as well, and the rest of the committee for the efforts. Couple things. I'm really impressed with the turnaround time on some of the questions that have come to me, that I've sent them, people to you.
Good.
So I appreciate that.
Sure.
Keep up the good work in that respect as well. The Lake Shore Boulevard, as you can tell with the agenda tonight and with work sessions and everything else coming up, it's a real hot button, and I'm baffled that we don't have some sort of historic study that's been done, even. I thought that there was one in the early 2000s, but I guess, you know, granted, that's going to be outdated, but we really need to get a traffic study done there so that we can validate or, you know, change some of the ideas that we've got coming up in the near future. And I guess that's pretty much it, so thanks.
Thank you, Paul. So just to speak real quickly to the traffic on Lake Shore, so even if there was a study done in early 2000s, I think it would need to be done at this point. Again, there's so much more traffic on Lake Shore Boulevard than there was even five years ago. So, any other questions?
Yeah, and also thank you and the other members of the committee. This is really important work to the livability of our community. And to that end, I think my understanding is that projects like that Econo Foods access, I mean, you see people walking there all the time. I think that's really important, but getting that into the budget and, you know, as that budget process comes this summer, those are the kind of projects, as I understand it, that I believe staff propose into the city manager, and then it comes into the capital works budget. And I think that's a place where community members might want to, you know, speak to us about the value of that and the priority of that. And also the idea that you're the place where all abilities, all manner of transportation comes in, so the petty cab folks and the, there's all those different ways of getting transported around town, whether you're in a wheelchair, you're walking, you're biking, you're on a skateboard, all that stuff. And I think we need to be planning for that, and I also heartily endorse the idea of this full Lake Shore Boulevard look, which I know the Planning Commission's also interested in as we are evolving in this community. So thanks again, and I did, I just want to call out, yeah, there are two seats it looks like coming up in May. If those folks are choosing, if they want to renew, that's great, and if not, this would be a great place to get involved. Thank you.
You bet. Any other questions?
Well, I think just I'd like to reinforce, I always end up adding cleanup here, but I'd very much like to reinforce, whatever we can do to fix the problem around Econo Foods and McClellan as it goes across US 41. That has been a problem for a long time, and I can go back to my first term on the commission when I think we were trying to work something out with the state, state highway, and got nowhere. So I realize that's a heavy lift for the committee to do, but I think that figuring out some safe way for people to get across that highway and get into Econo, and I'm not just pointing out Econo, but whatever business enterprise is up there.
Right.
Really becomes critical for us. That is an extraordinary.
And we were really glad to see MDOT, I'm sorry, we were glad to see MDOT at least put the pedestrian crossing lights and the ladders painted on the highway across. At least there's a pedestrian light there now, which wasn't.
Second comment, though, really directed at the audience, this is the value that a city committee can offer. You can see the heavy lifting these folks are doing, the good decisions being made, the wrestling with the problem, and then coming up with solutions that can be hopefully implemented. This is almost a lesson in civics, I think, is the way this has worked out. Nina, thank you very much for coming up.
You're welcome.
Thank you much for presenting, and please pass on our best to the committee. That brings us to the consent agenda. I would need a motion to accept the agenda.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second the motion.
So any further comments, Commissioner Hill?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Schlegel?
None.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no. Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us down to unfinished business, and that is the purchase of city-owned property, a portion of parcel 0240010. And reminder to me as well as everybody else that will require a roll call vote. City clerk, if you could read the background, please.
Thank you, sir. The city received a request from Carl Newmanin to purchase a portion of parcel 0240010. Mr. Newmanin purchased the adjacent depot building property at 201 South Fifth Street and later discovered a property description error. Mr. Newmanin would like to purchase the southern strip of property, 25 feet by 175 feet, as shown in the attached map, to correct the error. On October 9th, 2018, the city commission adopted a resolution of intent to sell, which directed the city manager negotiate the sale of the property and bring back the sale to the city commission for final approval. Fiscal effect, the city will realize $4,125, which payment is based on the cost of an appraisal and per square foot value based on the appraisal report. Recommendation, approve the sale of the property per the terms of the purchase and sales agreement, adopt the attached resolution of sale, and direct the city manager to complete the sale, alternatives as determined by the commission.
City commission, what is your pleasure? Before I do that, though, however, city manager, can you explain this particular piece of property that we're talking about so everybody has a clear understanding?
Sure, thank you. This is the railroad station on Fifth Street, just behind the, no, Colt Light in that area. Fifth Street, yes. So what happened here is that Mr. Newmanin purchased the building about a year ago from the private owner. After he purchased what he thought was the whole building, he learned that we owned half of it. So we entered into a negotiation with him so that he could have the other half. It made sense to us. We have no use for the building, no use for the property. We did carve out a little bit of property to allow him for some parking and things of that nature. The property was appraised, and he is paying the appraised value.
So we're ready to sell half a building. Now, commissioners, may I have a motion on selling half a building? Commissioner Campana.
I'd like to move that we approve the sale of property per the terms of the purchase and sales agreement, and adopt the attached resolution of sale and direct the city manager to complete the sale.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
I support half that.
Any further? We'll take that as a full commitment, correct? We have that as a full commitment. That's a full second, yes. Yes.
Is that a second, Pete?
It's a second.
Right, right. Commissioner Campana, any further comments?
No, it's a very small piece of property. The city doesn't need it, and it'd benefit the purchaser to have it at this time.
Commissioner Frazier? Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those supporting the motion, please signify by saying yes. The roll calls. Well, excuse me, I did it again, didn't I? Clerk, please conduct a roll call vote. Thank you. Commissioner Campana?
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel?
Yes.
Mayor Stonehouse?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. That brings us down to new business and item number 10. This will be a combined presentation and general agenda item. However, I think we will begin with the clerk, who will read the background on the item.
Thank you. The city of Marquette is a constituent member of the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, the MCSWMA, which operates a landfill for the disposition of solid waste. In the interest of the residents of Marquette County, the longstanding best management practices of the MCSWMA have been to promote recycling, repurposing, and other diversion of materials from the landfill's solid waste stream. The MCSWMA has determined that the best way to promote recycling is to institute a single-stream recycling program which requires the investment in a materials recycling facility. As part of this agenda item, the representatives of the MCSWMA will make a presentation on the recycling efforts and what the transition entails, including the investment in a materials recycling facility. There are several financing options which will be covered in this presentation. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, authorize the city manager to sign the attached letter of support for the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority recycling efforts. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
I have a note that Mr. Vertal would like to address the commission on that. I'm going to allow you to do that now before we do the presentation.
Frank Jeff Vertal, these are my opinions. Thank you for finally updating us on our recycling woes. Some people have given up on trying to make sense of it and no longer recycle at all. Their biggest reasons were the bi-weekly system and the handler's decision not to recycle glass. They became sick of carrying their bins to the road only to find them full the next morning because it wasn't the right week. Another concern was that heavy glass items migrate to the bottom of our green bags and break against each other or when set on the ground. This poses a hazard not only for our residents but the handlers as well. Of course, this board refused to discuss it even after two reminders. Instead, a member responded that you discussed glass, insinuating that I wasn't listening. This board was reminded at the next meeting that although glass was discussed, and we're all disappointed and feel betrayed that glass isn't being recycled, my concern about the safety hazard was never addressed. I was listening, the commission was not. Thankfully, glass is mentioned in tonight's agenda supplement, and a less confusing single-stream system is proposed. Most of us are probably willing to separate our fiber and rigid recyclables into separate bins. We're thrilled to no longer have to worry about which week is which and to know without doubt that our bulky glass items will be recycled and no longer pose a hazard in our green bags. Hopefully, those who gave up on the program will resume recycling.
I think it's time for the presentation, gentlemen. Are you prepared?
Thank you. On behalf of the Solid Waste Authority, I'd like to thank the commission for getting us on the agenda this evening. Some introductions before I get started. Chairman Yell, Solid Waste Authority Board Chair is here tonight. Our Finance and Benefits Director, Chris Magnusson, is also here tonight. He will talk regarding the business case for this project, and the landfill supervisor, Josh Wales, is also here. I'm here tonight to discuss a proposed change, not only in the recycling program in the county, but also a proposed project to implement a regional recycling facility. Our agenda, the current county recycling program, the proposed program and the associated project, why and how did we get here? Some of the authority actions that we've taken, TV6 survey and a feasibility study, the current proposed recycling equipment and the glass option, project goals and regional approach, a project status, project funding and the business case, and a summary at the end. The current recycling program in Marquette County commenced in 2012. It's a dual-stream program. It consists primarily of residential material. It's about 1,500 tons per year, alternating weeks, collection of fiber and rigid materials, curbside collection, and a variety of drop-off sites in different municipalities across the county. It has authority municipality agreements. We are marketing a mixed commodity, which is a low-value return. Participation is low or at best has leveled off at this point in the past year and a half. We do not have the ability to process commercial recycling at our facility, only residential The proposed program and project, we'd like to convert the county from dual-stream to single-stream recycling, and we'd like to implement a regional recycling facility. How do we get here and why? The authority has been evaluating recycling program for about the last two years. We find or had found that recyclables were going in the landfill. They were impacting the long-term life of the facility. There was two programs in the county. Residentially, we were doing dual-stream. Commercially, we were doing single-stream, and we found that to be an issue from an outreach and education standpoint. As I said earlier, a mixed commodity is marketed with low-market returns, contaminants impacting the product quality, including glass and other materials. Inability to process single-stream recycling, public feedback, we want single-stream recycling, and we've heard that for the past two years. My observations and position, we kind of started here and got together as a staff. This is something that we see at the landfill and is a pretty common occurrence. What you're looking at is clean cardboard. This is material that is ending up in the landfill, unfortunately, and this is material that we feel that we would like to see put to market. Most likely, what you're seeing here is a commercial product, not a residential product. That's some of the issues with commercial recycling right now. It has to be hauled out of county. The closest facility for processing is 125 miles away. We also see it on the plastic side. This is right on the landfill tipping pad. This is another issue. Again, we've evaluated this and we looked at it. This is where we started. We said we have a problem. We feel that we can do better. So we conducted a survey back in April of 2018 with TV6. We surveyed Marquette County residents. Eighty percent supported a one-bin system that would be collected weekly. Seventy-four percent more likely to participate in a recycling program with the one-bin system, and 55 percent supported a millage tax increase that would increase recycling participation, landfill diversion, and improve the system overall. We also conducted a feasibility study with consultant RRS out of Ann Arbor. They've been working with us for the past eight months. On the right-hand side of the screen, these were the results. We must move to a single-stream recycling program to attract tons. Upgrade paper processing, meaning get cardboard away from mixed paper. Recognize that preservation of landfill space will pay future benefits. Chris will talk a little bit about that in the business case. We need to aggressively promote the program, and we need to determine an economically feasible financing package. Current proposed equipment, this is how we're doing things right now. This is equipment onsite at the authority currently. This is dual-stream recycling. This machine was put into operation in 2016. It was built by authority staff. This has really been kind of a bridge to the next step, which is where we are now with the proposed movement from dual to single. As I said earlier, we do a combined commodity mix. On the left-hand side, you see mixed paper that is cardboard mixed with. On the left-hand side, you see mixed paper that is cardboard mixed with mixed paper. And on the right hand, you see the mixed rigid product, which is plastics one through seven. We are marketing those materials in various markets in the region currently. This is the proposed equipment. This is an existing structure at the Solid Waste Authority. This is a single-stream MRF or Material Recover Facility. This machine will allow the separation of commodities. So, on the far-right-hand side, that is a PET water bale, our water bottle bale. In the middle, you've got a high-density polyethylene product, aluminum in the bottom left, and your three-through-seven plastics on top. These commodities are worth more if separated. Same on the paper side, cardboard, clean OCC brown material on the left and white office paper on the right. Again, currently do not have these capabilities at the authority. Commercial recycling is what we cannot process now. This machine will give us the ability to do both residential and commercial. The glass option, Chairman Yell has some samples that we won't hand out until later because if we hand them out now, no one will look at the screens. But we've got two great options for this. It's a sand product. The County Road Commission has looked at it. They've talked about potentially putting it on the roads or using it in projects. We also have an aggregate material that could be used for landscaping and a variety of applications. I've heard some language tonight about recycling glass. We need to change the vernacular. We are going to repurpose glass in Marquette County because to move glass from Marquette County to a recycler to make new glass is not cost-effective. But what we can do is we can put equipment onsite that will produce this product and we can repurpose that material locally. I like this better because we control it. Circular, if you will, closing the loop. We get it, we sort it, and we're putting it back into the community, to our own facility. This makes more sense. A source-separated clean feedstock is essential to this per the equipment manufacturer and our consultant. And it's one very important thing to note that glass will not be a part of the single-stream recycling bin. Okay? We still have the same issues we had with glass a year ago. It is a contaminant. So, we have the ability to deal with it and do something with it more locally. But what we need to do is we need to source separate it. So, we can have municipality options. We could have curbside collection depending on the community. We could have a drop-off location. We could have authority drop-offs, which we will. We feel this is the best solution based on where we're located. Again, I think to make the point, repurpose versus recycling regarding glass. Glass machine, this is all part of the capital plan that we currently have proposed. This unit is made by a company, Endela. They're based out of New York. Local project goals, we want to minimize landfill disposal recyclables and extend the life of the landfill. We also want to increase access to recycling. We want to increase recycling program participation. We want a consistent education and outreach program. Right now, it is very difficult to teach K through five how to recycle when we have dual-stream and residential and we have commercial, single-stream on the business side. It's not consistent. So, we'd like to bring those two together. Also, job creation upon program growth. As we grow, we get bigger, more volume. There's an opportunity to create some jobs within the county, which is always good. On more regional level, increased recycling capacity in the Upper Peninsula. We do not have recycling processing abilities in the UP. The closest MRF is in Wisconsin. There are several in Wisconsin. We'd also like to increase the state's recycling rate. Currently, right now, mission is at 15%. It is the lowest recycling rate in the Great Lakes states. They have set interim goal of 30%, ultimately 45%. Marquette County's recycling rate is 8% currently. We'd like to support Michigan businesses. That cardboard that I showed you earlier, would love to ship that to UP Paper and Manastique. They would love to have it versus putting it in our landfill. This project is aligned with state initiatives. There are several pieces of legislation that are potentially working their way through in 2019, which could lead to recycling benchmarks across the state. There is activity potentially in state parks and certain mandates that could be coming down. It puts Marquette County in position to be able to handle that material, not only in our county but potentially from other counties in the UP. And then certainly would like to be a leader in rural recycling. This is something that is very near and dear to all of us. We'd like to be the best at what we do. We'd like to be a flagship, not only in Marquette County but outside of county lines. A little bit more on this regional concept. This has been proposed as a regional facility. We've met with Representative Capenzi, Representative McBroom, Senator Prucey, Senator Casperson, the director of DEQ. The feedback for this project has been fantastic. They love the idea of regional. That's how this funding that we've come across has really come into play here, the fact that we're proposing this as a more regional facility. And as I said, significant funding opportunities, the DEQ, a $1 million grant that we have applied for, near-confirmed. And also, a $3 million interest-free loan from the Closed Loop Fund, which is near-confirmed also. We do have a draft loan agreement in our possession now. The Closed Loop Fund is a private fund. It's a $100 million fund that invests in rural recycling programs. It's funded by Fortune 500 companies around the country like Walmart and Nestle. They flew here with the DEQ in February. They love the Marquette County story and it has been a fantastic relationship. And, you know, essentially where this puts us is two-thirds funded on this project. And Chris will talk a little bit more about that when we talk business case. Project status, it is shovel-ready. We are ready to go. We've got an RFP for 2019 construction. There's a lot of work to do in preparation for this project. A tentative project timeline has been developed and we have the ability to be online by the fourth quarter of 2020. At this time, I'm going to turn this over to Chris Magnuson, our Finance and Benefits Director. He will talk through the business case.
Thank you, Brad, and thank you for the city of Marquette for allowing us to present today. Wrong way. All right, project cost is 5.9 million. That's half of the cost of a new facility. The cost includes modifications to the current building and the equipment that we'll be bringing in for the recycling project. Okay. Project funding, near-confirmed. Closed Loop Fund that Brad reiterated earlier, it's a $3 million loan, 0% interest over 10 years, and the DEQ grant, which is a million dollars. That brings the funding to $4 million. Nearly two-thirds of the project funded, nearly confirmed. That leaves the options for $1.9 million private loan. There's three options we currently have on the table right now. Funded by a millage, one-tenth of a mill over 10 years will generate roughly $300,000 annually. The Urban Cooperation Act of 1967, it's an assessment of $9 per household per year, roughly 34,000 households in Marquette County that generate about $306,000. And then the final is the analysis of increasing solid waste tipping fees equivalent to the millage or the urban co-op funding. That's something we do internally to see that we can generate enough monetary funds to fund this. Projected tons and revenue stream. First year, we're looking at around 7,200 tons, about 5,300 in Marquette County. And we also have some commitments from some outside counties of about 1,900 tons to bring in as far as recycling product. Second year, 8224. Third year, 10,056. The total tons available in the areas of interest that we're looking at is about 19,000 tons right now. These estimates are conservative. They're estimated about half of what the average household produces in recyclables. And we have tipping fees. It'd be $0 for Marquette County material and $20 for out-of-county material bringing it into our facility. Right now, the market's about outgoing for recyclables between $52 and $60 a ton. And like, that's market-driven. The cardboard that Brad alluded to earlier, the OCC, that can be a higher-end commodity as time evolves. Projected cash flows, we have an initial capital investment around $158,000. Year one, we're looking at generating recycling income of around $443,000. For this model, we use the tipping fee allocation as far as our funding, the lesser operational expenses. The combined financing of both the CFL, CLF loan and the private lender loan brings us, first year, cash flow gets a little bit worse. As you bring in tonnage, as you educate the public, as we educate it as a regional facility, you can see the cash flow improves. And by year four, we're looking at positive cash flow. And these are conservative numbers as far as the tonnage, the tonnage that's available and what we can gather in. Kind of the indirect cost savings of this whole project is the preservation of the landfill. Right now, we estimate about 450,000 tons of solid waste going into each cell. The average cell life's between eight and 10 years. With recycling and keeping product out of the landfill, you save your cell life, you can extend it almost to 12 years. The construction cost per cell is about $727,000 per acre. There's an average of four to five acres per cell. So, if you extend the life of the landfill, your savings in cell construction can be up to $780,000 by extending the life of the landfill. To summarize everything, it's a project cost of 5.9 million. Two-thirds of it is nearly confirmed. Those are two organizations that have a strong belief that we can make this a regional recycling facility. Tonnage increases annually with non-county material. $0 tipping fees from Marquette County material. Projected positive cash flow by year four. And like I said, I think one of the biggest items of this is the indirect cost savings of the landfill life extension. Turn it over to Brad to summarize the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So, overall project summary, county recycling program's been evaluated over the past 18 to 24 months. We conducted a TV6 survey. We've conducted a feasibility study. Our consultant continues to be on board with us as of today as we continue to move forward. Proposed project would convert Marquette County from dual-stream to single-stream recycling. The proposed project provides an option for glass. Regional concept and a blended finance approach has provided the authority access to significant funding. The authority is pursuing additional funding in addition to what we've already described here tonight. There are some other options with the tribes and some other meetings that the authority will be conducting here in the next few months. There is potential opportunity for other funding that we will make efforts to pursue. The proposed project is shovel-ready and could be online by the fourth quarter of 2020. We are requesting support from the authorities, constituent municipalities for this project. These are some of our letters of support that we received over the past few weeks. There's, we probably get at least one every day. I anticipate that we'll get more. I know the city has not officially made a motion to come and support, but via another letter of support through the tribe, we understand that the city does support the project. But the feedback has been very positive. One of the most interesting ones in the last day or so on the third column on the bottom, the City of Hancock, has reached out to us. They also are very excited by this, which indicates hopefully a trend when we talk about more regional and what we could do in other parts of the Upper Peninsula. The last slide is a partnership between the authority and Uprusherts. I've been working with Jeremy Simons for the past few months and we needed to come up with a hawk. And this Recycle 906 logo, the state has just really ate this thing up. They love the idea, they love the concept. And, you know, a lot of the feedback that we've gotten at the authority is, and it's been referenced here tonight, which week is it? I go to the end of the driveway, I see what the neighbor has and if I don't have it, I don't know what it is. More convenient, less confusion, more recycling. If it's not easy, folks won't do it. And the glass part is a little bit off the normal single-stream recycling. But again, going back to where we are to markets and the ability to repurpose here locally, we think this is a great option. So, at this time, I'll take any questions that the mission may have.
Obviously, you guys have been working on this for a while. You see all the stuff in the news about all recycling, where the place is going overseas, stuff like that. You guys get some places you do recycle too, right? You know, you bring it somewhere that takes care of it and does actually recycle it. Bring those places that go overseas and so this will help. I think this will help like all communities in the area. You'll build this big machine out there and it'll help people in like other cities. Will the cities be able to bring their recyclers to your area then? Like the Sioux or Escanaba or something like that? Is that what your plan is to get Brad on board?
Absolutely. The plan is to build a facility that is regional, yes.
That's great. I think it's great for everybody and help everybody out. And it was a big thing for the last, big thing we've heard about for years and I think it's great. A lot of people said Wisconsin, do the same thing, they just put it in the road. So, it's great. God, the road commission's really into work with you and you guys are getting on the board and it's a great idea and hope you get things worked out.
Thank you.
Commissioner Campana?
Brad, you mentioned that the landfill can't take commercial recycling, like big cardboard stacks from different businesses, correct?
Actually, what we can't take is a commingled material. So, typically, businesses have a single-stream container. So, it does contain cardboard, but it also may contain plastic and other items. So, we are unable to process that because it's commingled together.
Do you presently take, because I see them at stores, big stacks of cardboard type. Do you take that?
If it's a business and it's picked up as a commercial business, most likely it goes out of county.
So, you could be getting that?
If it's straight cardboard, we could be. But if it's a commercial, it most likely goes with the rest of the commercial.
I mean, that's like easy money, isn't it?
OCC or cardboard is definitely the driver to recycling programs, certainly. It is.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Schlegel?
Thanks, Brad and Chris. Good presentation again. Number of, number of things I'd like to just kind of touch on real quick. Don't give up on the kids until we're, you know, the, I don't care if it's K through 12. Focus on them because I know it's paying off. My 15-year-olds coming home and busting my chops on a regular basis about what goes in the garbage and what goes in the recycling. So, keep up, that could work. And keep it up in the schools too. Thank you for doing that. I'm really excited about the commercial component to be able to accept that. That's growing up in a family business that produced a lot of cardboard. We would bring ours to a recycling facility every week and it was two pickup trucks load. You know, and it was a substantial amount. And to think of what Amazon and everybody's doing with their shipping, the cardboards, it's just a humongous opportunity for us to capitalize on. Repurposing glass, we talked about it a while back, Chairman Yell. And I was about ready to jump out of my seat. I was so excited. I don't care if we have to bring it somewhere else. We've got a ton of excited residents here that are willing to take these two, take all their glass to make these two options. It's going to be a fabulous opportunity and I think it's going to be blown out of the water. Thank you for that. And the cell extension, I mean, the first time that we heard this presentation or similar presentations, that was the other issue that really excited me to think that we're going to be able to extend the lifetime of that landfill to those degrees is really a compliment to, you know, what we've got. We owe it to ourselves to do that. And we've got to educate and the education is coming along with this, I'm sure. But it's just, you know, for somebody to come in here tonight and say that we haven't seen any progress as far as recycling goes in the city of Marquette or complain about there's certain things, yes, it's a little bit inconvenient. But without these difficult times that we've had to kind of deal with and it would not have probably gotten as aggressive. You guys probably would not have been pushed to the degree that you have been to find these opportunities and to get the grant monies and all these other things that are, you know, 18 to 24 months later, we're sitting here on some massive improvements. And I just want to commend everybody involved for their efforts in that respect. Thanks.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, thank you. I got to my like second week, I think, in office back in December. Got to hear a presentation, a really quite extensive presentation from the consultant about this single-stream. And it's very exciting to think that we'll be able to bring this to the Upper Peninsula. I have some, some questions. When you say no tipping fees, does that include commercial? So, no, so commercial and residential would not pay?
That's incorrect. Marquette County material, any material from Marquette County, zero tipping fees. Any material outside of county would have the fee, yes.
So, but, but, sorry. So, commercial establishments inside Marquette County would not pay a tipping fee?
That's correct.
And, which has to beat the pants off Wisconsin. And which has to beat the pants off Wisconsin, I would think, right? I mean, we're, we're making it attractive for commercial businesses to, to bring their materials to us. And, and that's how we, so I'm, my fundamental question is how we're going to be able to actually increase the tonnage. We're basically almost doubling it in four years. And one way to do that is to make the cost so much less by bringing it to Marquette instead of taking it to Wisconsin. And then the second way was, I had, I just lost my thought, train of thought. The, well, I'll, I'll jump to my other question. So the, well, and the money saved in keeping the landfill open, obviously. So with the resources to pay the one point nine million private loan, so you'd be going to like, to a bank to get a loan. Is that just to be, there's?
Correct.
There's no state level funding option at this time?
There's a one million dollar grant that's coming from the state and the three million interest free from CLF. And we are exploring other options, but yes, it would be a private lender.
Okay. And then what's the timeframe? It sounds like if we're going to be up and running, you think all this financing is going to come into place in the next couple of months?
This financing is near confirmed. The closed loop fund is looking to close in mid-June. We will have an answer from the MDQ by the middle of May regarding the one million dollar grant.
And so again, and the bigger question there, of course, is what risk are we entering into? And it sounds like there's, that you've taken care of that in the time that we've had to discuss all of this. Okay. And so that's really positive and exciting. And as Commissioner Schulte said, it's, this is hard work to get you, to bring us all to this point. And again, thank you very much for this. I know certainly when I was running, boy, oh, boy, I heard a lot about recycling. It's a very important topic to many people here in Marquette. And we're excited to, to help make this happen. One other question about glass, which is what's the timeframe on being able to actually produce the materials? Is, is that something, is that inside the funding as well, the glass, or is that also going to be funded separately?
The, the glass machine and the capital improvements to the structure are all a part of this package. Yes.
And so that's on the same timeframe of operational, so keep hoarding your glass for one more year, basically. Is what I, is what I, I, I know people, I saw someone this weekend who said she has not thrown a bottle away yet. Her children are getting more visits maybe in, in Minneapolis, but so we potentially could have glass repurposing by, you said, fourth quarter 2020?
Fourth quarter 2020. And, and, and again, the construction season this year and, and next year will be key. You know, we have some interesting weather. So, you know, we'll do our best, but we do have things prepared to start initial construction this year, which will be a lot of the foundation work, which is most important. If we can get that part done, then we can work inside, you know, for the winter months. So that's, that's the goal.
And would the millage, I think I talked to you a little while ago, there was a potential of a millage being on the ballot in August. Is that, that's not happening?
That is, as of right now, that is not happening. The solid waste authority passed a resolution for a mill, for a millage, one tenth of a mill. We went to the county a couple of weeks ago and there was some differing legal opinions. So the board is pursuing alternative options at this point.
Thank you.
Question. Thank you for the presentation. It was very well done and I think most illuminating for everybody, particularly for the folks that are out there watching us on TV and getting a good appreciation for what the issues are and how we can potentially solve them. Question, however, tipping fees, there will be an increase in tipping fee then to help fund the program?
Depending on what happens i- in the next few weeks here, right now, the solid waste authority board has tabled a discussion regarding the last two options, which are the Urban Cooperation Act and the increase in solid waste tipping fees in order to finance the, the remaining portion of the project. Yes.
So you're looking then at a millage plus the government grant to cover the cost?
We're looking at, in addition to the grant from DQ and the closed loop fund, we're also looking for remaining funding for the one point nine, which is either the millage, which we've had some issues at the county level, the Urban Cooperation Act, or an increase in solid waste tipping fees.
Okay. It, it certainly does look like we've got a good handle on how we're going to solve the, you know, solve the problem. And for that, I, I certainly commend you guys. It's been a lot of work over time. And it's a good civics lesson, I think, for everybody, is that problems are not solved with the snap of fingers. They take time, they take grinding, they take a lot of effort on a lot of people and a lot of heartburn along the way to come to a solution. And I think we're getting to that solution. We're getting very close to it, I think. And again, I, I commend the solid waste board for the great work they've done. Any further questions from the commission? City manager, you?
I want to make, just get one thing out and Brad, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when we talk about recycling glass, I want everybody to be aware that it, it, it can be done, but it may create a little bit of inconvenience to, to the, to the consumer. And that is that right now we have four weeks a month of recycling collection for each consumer. But in order to make glass work, and I think I'm correct, Brad, that we have to, we would do single stream three weeks of the four, and then one week would be glass only. So we can't intermingle the glass with the single stream. I just want everybody to understand that upfront. So Brad's done a nice job of, of, and the, the authority's done a nice job of addressing this problem. But it's going to take some work on the part of the consumer as well to keep track of that one week of the month that you have to recycle glass and, and you can't put the single stream out. I'm correcting that right?
That's correct. If that's the option that the city decides to go, and we certainly will help with that regarding the outreach. I think the communications between ourselves and the private haulers also is key. We can work with them to make sure that we've identified that, you know, specified week for if it's, if that's going to be glass that week. So.
Correct. Just, I appreciate that. Just to make it clear that the single stream does not include glass, but we have the ability to make glass work.
But as we have people that have been saving it now for maybe a year, missing a month won't make any difference at all. Commissioners, we do have the item in front of you and I'm looking for a motion on it. Still looking, I guess. Not a problem. I said government works slow sometimes.
I would make the motion or make the recommendation to authorize the city manager to sign the attached letter of support for the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority recycling efforts.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier. Commissioner Schlegel, any further comments?
Nothing that we haven't beat up already, but keep up the good work.
Thank you. Commissioner Frazier.
No comment. Just keep the glass flowing.
Commissioner Campana.
I'd just like to say that I think I'm in total support of this plan and I think everybody in the county is in total support. The only thing, as I'm looking at this letter of support, I don't like the idea of a millage. I think it should be a tipping fee increase because I think that's the fairest to all the citizens of the county of Marquette. Anything else is an unfair assessment. The millage is not totally fair because it covers different municipalities. So I, and I'm looking at this letter of support. I think it says that a tipping fee can be part of it. And again, you know, I'm going to vote for this and I totally agree with you guys and I think we have to do this. But I personally wanted to see it to be, I would like to see it be tipping fee. Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Hill.
Well, yeah, the, the letter as written says that we'll investigate a millage, investigate the Urban Cooperation Act, and then serve as a regional recycling hub to garner income. Which, so, may I, can I ask it clearly? So you're, that's, you're comfortable with that language?
Comfortable.
Okay, thanks.
We have a motion on the floor. All of those commissioners that are in favor of it, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any commissioner against it by saying, by saying no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. That brings us to item eleven, the video system RFP. And Mr. Clerk, if you could please read the data.
Thank you, sir. The video recording system located in the commission chambers is at the end of life and needs replacement. Earlier this year, an RFP was issued and two vendors responded. Because both bids came in too high, the bids were rejected and the commission authorized staff to issue a second RFP with revised specifications. The city received two responses to this second request for proposal. AVI Systems submitted the lowest bid meeting specifications. The AVI Systems bid was ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. And the camera corner connecting point bid was one hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty cents. Fiscal effect, in two thousand seventeen, the city's PEG fee was increased to point four seven five percent as part of the renewal of the city's franchise agreement with Charter Communications Spectrum. Funds received from the PEG fee can only be used to pay for the cost of equipment necessary to broadcast over the city's cable channel, one ninety-one. The lease for the city's current system has expired and the cost of the lease used all of the reserves in the PEG fund. Even with the increase in the PEG fee, it will take approximately five years to build up the PEG fund to the amount needed to purchase the system. Staff is recommending using IT reserve funds to purchase the system and to reimburse the IT reserve funds over the next five years from the PEG revenue fund. Staff has looked into several lease options and found that the purchase would be more cost effective option since we were unable to secure a favorable interest rate. Sufficient funds are available in the IT reserve fund to cover the purchase. Recommendation, approve the purchase from AVI Systems and authorize the city manager or his, his designee, and following review by the city attorney, to sign a contract with AVI Systems for the installation of a new video recording system for a total cost not to exceed ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier.
I'm making a motion to approve the purchase from AVI Systems, authorize the city manager or his designee, and following review by the city attorney to sign a contract with AVI Systems for installation of a new video recording system for a total cost that exceeds ninety-nine, seven, one, zero, point, zero, zero.
Is there a second? Commissioner Hill.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Frazier, further comments?
I see RT guys in the, out in the crowd, just, just do Facebook. Wouldn't it be cheaper?
Commissioner Hill.
Yeah, well, actually I want to, I have a couple of questions regarding costs. Thank you. So as someone said in the agenda review on Friday, a hundred thousand dollars would buy you a house. So why, what, what does a hundred thousand dollars buy you with this camera system?
Why, why not just a video recorder, right?
Yeah.
Well, so the, and I, I would love the commissioners at any time to, to come down and actually take a look at the system, what we actually have in place and what it takes to run and, and record and rebroadcast these meetings. But there is a lot of equipment involved. It's not just the cameras. So we have a video recorder that also serves as, as a broadcasting. It, we connect with Charter and so we can broadcast live during the meetings and then we use that as a tool to rebroadcast the meetings and to broadcast other content during the, the following weeks, including slideshows for upcoming events of the city, board postings, things like that. Anything that we can help educate or inform the public is on that channel. So we have a server that runs that. Part of the reason we're low in PEG funds right now is because last summer we replaced all the audio system and we did an upgrade to the audio. For example, it's not just the microphones, but we wanted also the ability to be able to turn up and turn down the mics as needed remotely. Or if a commissioner forgot to turn on a mic or the, you know, the clerk or our recorder can handle that remotely now. So we have, we have an entire rack, a six foot rack full of audio and video equipment. We've got over a mile currently of cable run through the building to these pieces of equipment to run it. Just an example, the cameras have three different cables that run to each camera. One is for power, one is an RS two thirty-two, which allows you to, to actually activate it, pan, tilt, zoom, and, and to run it. And then, of course, the third cable is to transfer data, sound and video through it. So there's a, a lot of components that, that make up this system. So it's not just a series of cameras, but actually a complete record, video, audio recording system. And so they just, they are very expensive. The first set of bids we got were not surprising. They actually were right in line with what the industry standard is and what we expected. But we didn't have the money in the PEG. That's why we asked the commission if we could go out again and, and try to get a better bid, which we were able to do. The major difference was the first time around, the companies that supplied us with bids, they offered full twenty-four, seven onsite support, remote support, and, and that was very expensive. And since we're not a twenty-four, seven news broadcasting system, but we record and replay a commission meetings and other boards and committees when necessary, we don't really need a twenty-four, seven. So what I did with the second bid is I actually asked for a per hour charge for any labor that would be needed. So we have the initial manufacturer's warranty on the equipment that we'll have. And then we have a very good relationship, actually with both companies that bid, we have an excellent relationship. We work with both of them. We, we've partnered for years with both of them and have had excellent results from both of them. So we don't have any doubt that we'll get good support. But we asked for an, an hourly fee. So if we did have to call, we do have the opportunity or the option for remote access because they're both in Green Bay. So that's going to save us a lot of money, time and effort. But if they did have to come on site, we have the, the hourly fees plus it would be room and board while they're here. So, so that's all kind of considered into the, into the bid as we're going forward.
Yeah, I thought I saw that we would be served by Grand Rapids.
They're actually out of Green Bay. AVI Systems out of Green Bay.
Okay, good.
I hope I didn't overanswer or I hope I did answer your question.
Thank you. And then I just, I noted that they had listed as reference the Lansing, East Lansing Community Schools, the Lansing Community College, the county of Washington, the city of Portage, which gave me a lot of comfort that, that these other, and to hear that we've been working with them.
We can add city of Marquette to that. They, they are actually the company that put in our audio system last summer. We have purchased our video server, two video servers through them. We've been very happy with them.
And I, I just, also just, I'll note this, is that they're an employee owned company. So that's terrific.
We also were very happy with the other company as well. They came in quite a bit cheaper.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Frazier.
Can they say that mics also be cheaper?
Commissioners, we have a motion in front of you and no, no apparent further comment from commissioners. Therefore, the question is, will you, will you support? All those voting in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five, zero. That brings us down to number twelve, Cliff's Dow Property Sale Development City Commission Subcommittee. And Mr. Clerk, again, if you would read the data.
Thank you, sir. Along with other surplus properties, a request for qualifications for prospective buyers and developers was sought in April two thousand eighteen for the approximately twenty-five acre vacant parcel located at two thousand one North Lake Shore Boulevard, commonly known as the former Cliff's Dow site. Redevelopment of the site has been an ongoing priority for strategic planning for the city of Marquette for many years. Because more than one proposal has been received, the city manager recommends a city commission subcommittee of the mayor and two additional city commissioners to work with city staff to select a preferred proposal for full commission consideration. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, appoint the mayor and two additional commissioners appointed by the mayor to work with city staff to recommend a proposal for the sale and development of the former Cliff's Dow property with the intent of bringing the recommendation back to the city commission for its consideration no, no later than October twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have one person indicated wanting, I have one person who indicated they wish to speak to the. Commissioners, I have one person indicated wanting, I have one person who indicated they wish to speak to this item. Ms. Brum.
Margaret Brum, four oh four East Magnetic Street. My comments are being made assuming that the commission is going to adopt this motion and appoint a subcommittee and move forward with evaluating the property for sale to a developer, which is what I've heard at multiple meetings on multiple subjects. It's going to happen. I'm here tonight to offer my services to the commission as a technical and legal consultant on this matter. My qualifications for that are item one, two, and three. Item one, I grew up in Marquette and I remember the smell. Anybody who, I heard a snicker behind me and I know they're not laughing about what I just said, they remember the smell too. If you grew up in Marquette and you drove past that smell, you knew it was chemicals, you knew it was bad, and you couldn't wait to get away from it. And as a, growing up in Marquette, it never occurred to me that the city would develop that property, but it's happening and you have to face reality, it's going to happen. So, number one, I remember the smell. Number two, I'm a graduate of Michigan Technological University with a bachelor's science degree in chemical engineer with honors. I've worked for over nine years for the Dow Chemical Company. While I was at Dow, I had access to certain records. Again, I'm not allowed to share with you the details, but I know more about the Cliffstow site than it is in the public record and I can be of assistance without betraying any confidence thereby. But the Cliffstow site is a very complicated site with multiple things being made there over multiple times. And at the time it was shut down in nineteen sixty-nine, the analytical techniques available to find and ascertain the extent of contamination were not as developed as they are now. Number three, I went to law school at the University of Michigan. My torts professor was a rabbi, an orthodox rabbi named Aaron Torsky, who communed. He went from New York to Ann Arbor every week to teach this class. His distinction in life was he is a famous torts professor and he was the one who came up with a theory that held Dow Chemical and the other producers of Agent Orange liable for contamination of dioxin, even though it was a contaminant, not an intended participant. In other words, he changed the law in the area of torts liability holding producers of a chemical liable for contaminant that wasn't intended to be there. And he educated me very thoroughly about how the law and this, in this reality that we live in now favors the plaintiffs in any lawsuit involving chemical contamination. So, when I say I make this offer to be of assistance to the committee, it's based on my education, experience, and I remember that smell. And I'm, there's other people you could hire. I just, I'm here, it's now, and I'm available to be of assistance to this committee and I wanted it on the record that I made this offer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners, how do we want to move on this, this item? Make a motion. Commissioner Schlegel.
Make the motion to appoint the mayor and two additional commissioners appointed by the mayor to work with city staff to recommend a proposal for the sale and development of the former Cliffstow property with the intent of bringing the recommendation back to the city commission for its consideration no later than October twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier.
Second.
Commissioner Schlegel, anything further?
I think that this is a really attractive way to go about this and I think that it's something that should allow us to do some proper vetting and bring forth the best possible opportunity that we could ask for.
Commissioner Frazier.
I'll comment.
Any other commissioner? Commissioner Hill.
So, this is tied directly to the redevelopment of Lake Shore Boulevard, just to be clear, and the moving of the road and the opportunities that come from moving the road away from the lake to allow this property to be something that could be developed. I just want to make, from everything that I've been told, that's what I understand. And so, some of these dates, I believe, and could have clarification, that they're being driven by that process as well as just what happens to this site. And it does mean development in an area that has not had a building on it for a very long time in Marquette's. And as that conversation happens about an area that's been empty or had the composting and recycling on it, there, hopefully, I think, I hope that the city can find ways that we can communicate about the process of how this development's going to happen and how decisions that get made years ago come to fruition and people say, well, how did this happen, where did this come from? And so, if there's ways we can have timelines be very clearly displayed so that if someone has a question, there's a way to find out what that answer is, I think that would help and go a long way to addressing residents' concerns that they didn't know about something. That's my request to this committee. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, motion is on the floor. All those commissioners in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes five, zero. If I may step out of the roll for a second. No, I'll do that as Commissioner's comments. That brings us down to item number thirteen, which is a resolution of intent to sell municipal property, parcel zero four eight zero zero one zero. And as a reminder to everyone and myself, that is a roll call vote. This parliamentary stuff can get a little tricky sometimes, but. Mr. Clerk, if you can please read the, read the item.
Thank you, sir. The City of Marquette received a letter of intent to purchase city parcel zero four eight zero zero one zero, which is situated on the northeast corner of Presque Isle and Holly Street. The parcel is currently vacant and considered surplus. If the city commission adopts the resolution of intent to sell, the next step would be for the city manager to secure an appraisal for the property and bring back a proposal for sale of the property for consideration at a later date. Fiscal effect, it is anticipated that an appraisal for this parcel will not exceed five hundred dollars. Recommendation, adopt the resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to direct the sale of the parcel in accordance with the city code. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, before we begin the process, I'm going to ask the city manager to again explain the background of that particular piece of property.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This particular property is an approximate twenty-five foot by one hundred and forty foot swath that's located on the corner of Presque Isle and Holly Street. I believe it would be the southeast corner, adjacent to the Cliffstow property. We were approached by a local businessperson, Steve Pelto, who owned at least part of the recent, the building that recently burned down, the storage facility at that location or just south of there, and he wants to rebuild. And in order to do that, he'd like to rebuild better and would like to have this additional property to do that. I don't know what he plans on rebuilding. And just to clarify one other point, the fiscal effect, when we say the appraisal's not to exceed five hundred, we mean the cost of the appraisal, not the appraised value. Okay? That's what, all right.
Thank you. Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner Frazier.
I make a motion to adopt resolution of intent to sell and direct the city manager to direct the sale, the parcel, in accordance with the city code.
Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Schlegel.
Second.
Commissioner Frazier, any further comments?
Looked better than a burned-down building.
Commissioner Schlegel?
None.
Any other commissioner?
I had a question about the drainage in that location, did you have a chance, I know that wasn't long ago.
I think I can ask Dennis to help with that question.
Thanks.
Well, the, the property is identified as surplus property in the municipal property inventory manual, meaning that it has no projected future municipal use. And also, the drainage swath that's occurring is on the north side of Holly Street, it won't affect this parcel at all.
Thank you.
Correct. Any other commissioners? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
You even got us.
This is participatory democracy, right here. Mr. Clerk, if you would please, please do a roll call vote. Commissioner Campana.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Schlegel.
Yes.
And Mayor Stonehouse. Yes. That brings us down to item number fourteen, development agreement with HRS Founder's Landing LLC and Marquette Opportunity LLC for parcel two of Founder's Landing. Mr. Clerk, if you would please read the background.
Thank you, sir. A purchase agreement for the sale of parcel two of Founder's Landing to Founder's Landing Joint Venture LLC was executed on October ninth, two thousand eighteen. A condition of the purchase agreement was that both parties were to execute a development agreement that specified obligations for each party of the Founder's Landing Joint Venture LLC, HRS Founder's Landing LLC, and Marquette Opportunity LLC regarding minimum parameters for construction and taxation, as well as timelines for development. The development agreement has been prepared and approved by council for all parties and is being presented for your consideration and approval. Approval of the development agreement will permit the closing of the sale at a future date to be determined. Fiscal effect, approval of the development agreement will provide for closing on the property. At the time of closing, the city will realize a one-time revenue of one million, one hundred thousand dollars for the sale of the property. Recommendation, approve the development agreement as presented. Alternatives, as determined by the commission.
There were a number of people that, of citizens, rather, that asked to speak to this question. I'm just going to read them off, or I'm going to just call you up in the listing that I have them, which may not necessarily be the listing of when you presented, if that makes sense. Mr. Verto, if you can lead us, please.
Frank Javerto, these are my opinions. Here we go again, no depiction provided in the agenda packet tonight or back on October ninth. All we saw last time was a drawing with easement and infrastructural markings. Our concerns about this lack of obviously needed information were ignored again. Yes, depictions were shown in the chamber last time, but we can't be expected to prepare comments upon our arrival at meetings. We deserve a chance to comment effectively. Last October ninth, this board heard, quote, "Unbelievably, again, no decent depictions appear in our packet, only a small-scale utility diagram that does us little good. Upsetting is the fact that this board seems okay with the manager repeatedly not providing adequate depictions for our land use items. This board is blamed for perpetuating this problem by not instructing the manager to provide them," end quote. Well, you've done it again, you know, another recurrent error. Others have commented on this also, but no improvement because the manager well knows he's in good, in good with the commission that undervalues public participation. He knows he can omit needed site plans with no ramification. Renderings are especially important because, as we, this board heard, October ninth, quote, "The architect was forthright in telling us he plans to construct more three-story buildings, the maximum allowed by zoning." Yet, Mr. Splod and Schlegel motioned immediately after the architect's spiel disregarding public comment. He claims his condos will capture the feel of the neighborhood, which in the opinions of far too many is not the case with his eyesores that already block our view from US forty-one," end quote. This is the very development, Founder's parcel two, that I've accused Mr. Stonehouse of lying about, in part because no renderings or site plan were provided before October ninth. He had assured us last May fourteenth that, quote, "It will be a long process with time for public input and sensitivity will be used when parcel two is developed," end quote. This is not what we've seen across that landscape. Mr. Stonehouse said that just to get himself through the moment. Again, we're not receiving a fair chance unless Mr. Stonehouse delays this until we're afforded renderings in the packet so we can comment effectively. Of course, Mr. Campana refused to do so last time. It mattered none to him because the architect seems to run this commission, not the mayor. Well, this mayor needs to protect his own honorability by giving us the fair chance that he assured us. What a sin that in the eleventh hour, this board discarded twelve years of careful planning, foresight, and public input favoring the fulfillment of one man's dream instead of implementing the promised collaborated effort of our community. The impact is already so evident, yet you vote his way every time.
Ms. Bernard, I think you were next.
Hello. I'm a resident of Marquette all my life, lived in South Marquette.
Can I have the actual address, too?
One eleven Newberry Street.
Thank you.
In South Marquette. And I've lived in South Marquette for the last forty years. I've been disappointed by the recent loss of the views in South Marquette. All the homes on Front Street, Fisher, Champion, Palm Street, used to have views of the lake. We no longer have views of the lake, we have the views of the backsides of condos. That being said, that can't be changed. But we are looking at the development of South Founder's. I'm requesting that the three-story limit be strictly enforced with no variances. I'm not a codes person, I don't understand it, I won't pretend to. But what does three stories mean? Is it three stories of living space? Is it three stories and a full-size attic with a picture window? Like I see at one of the buildings down in the Lower Harbor. I would like the code strictly enforced and the buildings be designed to fit into the neighborhood. There are many houses on Champion Street that are going to lose their view. These are homes where people have lived for thirty, forty, fifty years and have had a view of the lake and now they will have view of the backside of a hotel, townhouses, and a restaurant, all crammed into a very small piece of property. So, I'm asking this commission to have an oversight and to be sure that the code is strictly enforced and that we're not looking at tall buildings. How would you feel if you had a home on the lake or a view of the lake and now you have the view of the backside of condos? Thank you.
Thank you. There was a gentleman from UP Architects, I believe, that was here.
That's a different one.
I'm sorry?
He wants a different, he wants a number, a different number.
Which one number was he? Seventeen, okay. Mike, you're, that would then bring us down to Mr. Arshambo.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the commissioners. I live at nine oh one Champion Street and anyone who lives in Champion Street realized at some point Founder's is going to be developed. It was always a stated fact. My biggest concern is the impact in the community that, of Champion Street. I think strictly limiting the height to three stories is going to be essential and trying to minimize the density of these townhouses. The more density, the more the impact is going to be, both in traffic, light pollution, and use of Champion Street. And these gentlemen, who are investors in this property, and I understand that, don't live there. They will have, once they're done with that, they're gone. I guess another point I would like to make is how many hotels do we need? Are we going to make Marquette another Traverse City where we have densely packed hotels? I don't think I particularly like the direction we're going. I realize Founder's is a tax opportunity for the city. I realize we need tax revenue, that's a reality. But if we're uncareful, we're just, they're going to leave, we get stuck with the impact, and it's not going to be pleasant. So, I want this commission to oversee the, the development of this property, not on their behalf, but on citizens' behalf, your representatives. They're not. They will leave when this project is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Russell, I think you were.
Hello. And I'm sorry, this is, this is something very close to my heart. My heart goes pretty bad over this whole subject. I've spoken through many actors' mouths about the beauties of Marquette and Lake Superior. Some of you know how much I love this region. So I'm going to start with just a tiny bit of history, if you'll forgive me, Mr. Stonehouse. One is that I think a very revered person, Mr. Peter White, said that on Champion Street, everyone would have a view of the lake. My old house up on Champion is set so that there's a house there, and there's a house there, and I have a little zen view of that big old lake. I realize that you can't give up income for the city to save a couple people's view of a lake. Views are sellable. But I do think that when we start trading off the perspectives of some of the people that developed this region, and have meant so much to this region, we start to sell off who we are and who this place is. Another tiny little piece of history. I attended a meeting a few years ago, several years ago, in fact, before the first building down there was built. I just want to read you a quotation. I'm sorry, this, it's very upsetting, of course, but, you know, I realize some things are inevitable, but this was a quotation from that meeting. This will make some of you laugh. I quote, "The view from Champion Street will not be changed." That's what we were told. If you want to drive up on the overpass, drive down Champion Street, you'll see that the view was indeed changed more than a little. A few years ago, I had the opportunity to go, I was invited down to a condo in Florida, and I was very appreciative. It was, I had a view of the lake. But if you didn't live in that condo, if you didn't have a hotel room on that street, you didn't have a view of the lake or the ocean. You couldn't see it at all. You would not see it at all. If we keep going in the direction we're going, selling out to the Fairfields and the Holiday Inn Expresses, and whatever next hotel and next chain is in line, some of us won't have anything to write about. Thank you.
Ms. Berry, I think you.
Lynn Berry, nine oh one Champion, commissioners. I grew up in South Marquette, and went away to college and came back five or six years ago. And my great-grandparents' grandparents had houses on Champion Street, the lakeside. But the view wasn't so hot then, was, you know, railroad park. And it's, it's been much nicer. A couple of things happened that relate to my thoughts on this issue in the time I was gone. One, I visited my sister who lived on, who lives on the eastern seaboard, and I looked at the map. I said, "Hey, there's this cool island. It goes, it's really long and skinny, and you can look on water on both sides," you know? So I got my family to take that drive to that island, and we did see water, a little bit on the bridge getting on, and then we drove north, and there was a little bit on the bridge getting off, and totally built up on both sides otherwise, even though it was really close, the ocean and the bay, you know, between the shore. And if you didn't have the money to own property or rent property there, you could not see it. And Marquette's been a special place. It needs money to function, and the view's much better than it used to be. And I'm not trying to be selfish. My view's pretty safe. I'm on the bluff. But when the Founders Landing was developed with the condos, you know, I heard, "Oh, are they going to keep it below the road level? That'd be cool." I'm like, "Cool." And then I came back and visited, and it wasn't. And I heard, "Well, something wasn't known ahead of time, and they had to bring a lot of fill," and so it got, you know, up, a story and more in places. And part of what Marquette is, is when you come from the south, is the light, the nice view. And one of the most beautiful things I ever saw was from Champion Bridge, on a very, very quiet day. The water was so limpid, you could see all the way to the bottom, all the way out to the breakwater. And so I don't know if there are public hearings, if there were, I missed them, about what this development will look like. And I hope there was consideration of trying to maintain for the public, as much as we can, of the beauty of our city. And I still do have a sister and a cousin and mom who have property on that side, so I do have some investment. But thank you for your attention, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Did I miss anyone that had asked for time? Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
Approve, I make a motion to approve the development agreement. Will provide for the closing of the property. Time of the closing, oh, sorry, wrong, wrong one. That's fiscal effect. All right. Approve the develop, make a motion to approve the development agreement as presented.
Is that considered an adequate motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Campana?
I would second that.
Commissioner Frazier, any further comment?
Okay, it's, it's not fun for some people, not for some of the people that live in the area. I know, at least you're voicing your opinion, you live in South Marquette. Certain people, like Mr. Vertow, other people voice their opinion, they don't live anywhere near that, and on the east side, they voiced their opinion, but their view's never blocked. So I understand your concern. I know when that property was first developed, there was a, a building code, but then they didn't realize it. I just remember the contractor working on that place, they had put, like, a lot of dirt down, like six feet of sand, to get the buildings up higher, to get above a code or something like that for bad ground, so that was something, they didn't take it into effect. Hopefully, they'll take it into effect this time and figure it out, but wasn't, you know, they built the, the buildings up to code, but they just didn't figure in that extra ground down below, which is too bad, but, you know, it'd be nice once it gets done, so.
Commissioner Campana?
The view of the lake has always been a sore spot amongst residents. I get it. I think everybody else gets it. It's just one of those things that we have to accept and have to live with. It's going to happen, I, you know. It's unfortunate. We all would like just the pretty view of the lake. I would like to mention that the east side of the road will belong to the city. It will be public property. So you'll always have access to the lake. You'll always have access to the view if you drive it or walk it or bike it. And the bike path is there. So it's, we're not blocking the lake, other than perhaps with this development, but you'll always be able to see the lake if you want to get down there. That property was an old railroad yard that was purchased by the city, and the plan was to develop it. We are finally coming to that point. We have had, I could be wrong, but no buyers in all the years that we've had it. I mean, we're fortunate to have somebody that wants to develop it now. This will add to our tax base. You know, we're losing Prescott Power Plant. It's over a million dollars a year, and the city needs to keep their tax base intact. This will help. That, to me, is a good thing. I guess the other question comes up, we have the architect and perhaps developer here tonight. Can I ask a question? Will it be three stories or less? Do we go there?
You may ask the question.
Huh?
Please.
Okay. Will it be three stories or less? Or what is your plan? Can you give us a quick brief on it?
Sure. Good evening. Barry Poles is an architect for this development of parcel two. The building that we're planning, for, all the buildings we're planning down there, will completely comply with zoning. No variances required. They're in complete compliance. And I will remind everyone here, and I'm certainly hearing you and, and feel, feel this, you know, I understand this. I grew up in Marquette, too, and I remember the stink while she left. There, there was a time when the zoning was written for this parcel. There was a time when the city was considering purchasing the property, and then what to do with the property. There was extensive public hearings that went on. This was twelve, fifteen years ago, and then again, eight, ten years ago, then again, two to three years ago, when the South Marquette Form-Based Code was written. So these were the times to define what happens, and this is true with the rest of it. This would be the true with, you know, potentially the Cliff Tower property. There is a time to do that. Now, as an architect, I take, I take the rules, and I have a real great success rate at getting projects approved, because I just design according to the rules. So what we're doing there, completely compliance. It is a three-story building, three-story hotel, and some of the townhouses will have a third story, which will be the gable roof, so it won't be above that. So, so again, it, it'll all be in compliance. And, and I, and we have to remember, too, that, as Dave's pointing out here, that the road is public. So we're on the west side of, of the road, of Lake Shore Boulevard, the bike path, the Lake Shore, all of that is public property. And that was beautiful, how that was set up. Even the development on parcel three, still, it's public property out to the lake. The water's edge is owned by the public. Same thing here.
Vertow comments? Thank you, Mr. Poles. I'm sorry, do you have a comment?
Barry, if I can follow up on that, please? Or, or maybe it's a question for staff. I think that an actual elevation here might help, because there is, if I'm not mistaken, you know, three stories is thirty feet. Three stories is thirty feet to the ridge line or to the midpoint of the roof line. You know, there's, there's a different interpretations depending on, on the style of the build.
This, the hotel will be the taller of the, of the things built down there. It has flat roofs. There are some tall elements. I, you know, know it, if you know, been around Marquette, see what I design. I never do anything simple, right? Always have to have some form to it. I will say that we're taking what's normally a total prototype design hotel, and we're making it fit for Marquette. So I've taken what could be a very long facade of a hotel and broken it into, like, seven little buildings. So when you drive down the street, you're not seeing one big, long, uniform hotel. It actually looks like little blocks. From the front street side, you're going to see some nice brick. Now, the Marriott dictates what kind of materials, and we're saying, "No, we can't do that here because we want brick that looks like old Marquette, looks like the old roundhouse." And so we are taking that kind of stuff into consideration to, to make it fit, like it belongs in, in Marquette, so. But flat roof, three stories.
Thirty feet.
Just one little, two, two spots that go up a little higher.
Am I, am I, thirty feet, is that where we're, is that, was that what three stories is?
By zoning, it's, it's more than that, but.
Clearly, it's not.
In the Form-Based Code, you're generally allowed twelve feet per story.
We don't have that. We have a.
This, and Barry's right, this was all decided four or five years ago in Marquette, South Marquette Form-Based Code, and it does meet all of those standards.
I, I know people are just going to, you know, we're sitting here, and we're just trying to visualize. No discredit any of your creations. I think, you know, you've done a lot of nice work for us as a community, but, you know, there's a few people that are up there, they're, they're getting down the hill there on Champion, and unfortunately, you know, those are the people that are going to, to lose that view, unfortunately, to a certain degree. You know, they're still going to be able to see the lake, still going to be able to see many aspects, but it's, you know, it's, it's not easy, and I, I sympathize. So.
Well, sure.
Along with that, thank you. I don't think I have anything further. Maybe it would be beneficial, Mr. City Manager, to tell us, because there's a lot of people here that are not real familiar with where we are in the process. Okay, so where do we go from here?
Well, first of all, the, the property's already been sold. Okay, you've already approved that sale back in October of last year. As part of that sale agreement, we agreed that we would come up with this development agreement as, as another phase. The development agreement has been vetted through a city attorney and through their attorney. It meets all the standards and requirements that we consider necessary for this situation. I will also mention that this design and build has already been approved by the Planning Commission and has passed muster there. So by all intents and purposes, this action here is the next and final phase, in my opinion, to bring this total process to a close. It will basically put into motion the, the closing process and the payment of, to the city of one point, one million dollars.
Thank you. So it, it's important for those people that haven't been following this process here that, you know, there's several steps that have led to where we sit tonight, from, you know, we're the guys here that make the final decision, but truly comes, you know, through many other channels leading up to this evening, through the Planning Commission process and everything else that does the checks and balances to make sure that it fits within the parameters of what the city has in place. So it's important, you know, to bring that up. I don't, oftentimes, having been through the, the Planning Commission side of things, people don't understand the extent of the work that goes into getting us to where we are today, and it's, and it, and it makes it look like we're one, two, three, four, five of us up here tonight that are going to be making a decision that is, in some people's opinion, going to undoubtedly come back and say that it wasn't done properly, when it has been done a hundred percent properly. So just a couple of points that I wanted to bring up. That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Hill?
As someone who found the land use process so confusing in our country that I actually paid a lot of money to go to planning school to learn about it, we could be doing a better job of explaining to the community how this happens. It's not necessarily, this is, since it does take years, we need to write it down and put it out to the public. I, I, this is what got me elected. I, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm, so, yes, everything has been done legally. Yes, there have been steps over time, but can we please write it down so that the public can see this? I, 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 I've heard you today, and again, no one has done anything wrong except to take the time to write it down and explain to people what has happened over time.
It's there.
So where? Where? Where can you, where can I, as a city commissioner? I don't know when Founders Landing was sold. I don't know, so I'm, I wasn't intending to be this forceful, but it just came out because this is crazy, and we can do better than this. I, I, like I said, I went to college, graduate school twenty years, twenty years ago, and, you know, I somehow managed to learn that if you explain things to people, they don't have to feel so, so lost in all of this process. And part of it is, we have, we have a very lean staff in this city. Basically, you know, we, we get, they get a lot done, but we don't take the time to explain it to people. So maybe the developer could take some of that on. I don't know. But honest, I, we can explain what we do over time and put this down on paper and put pictures up and 3D models, CAD drawings exist. This stuff can all be done. It can all be done. If, if, if high school students right now are learning CAD design, why don't we have a CAD design right now in front of us? I'm done.
Any other commissioner comments?
I would certainly agree with some of the comments Commissioner Hill made. We certainly can do a better job of explaining it. We certainly can do a better job of presenting it. With this process, I can go back fifteen years with it, and I remember walking the ground. grounds at Founder's Landing with the then-city manager in a public walk, explaining what was going to happen and how it was going to happen. And I think we had ten people. And I don't know how many meetings I've been at with the Planning Commission, meetings I've been at as public forums, meetings I've been at here in the City Hall as a city commissioner or a non-commissioner, a member of the citizen in the audience, and nobody's here, or very few. So when you say, do a better job, communication is always a two-way street. People are talking, somebody's gotta listen. Somebody's gotta ask questions as that process moves along. And what often happens is exactly what's happening now, I didn't know, or what about? And these are all good questions, and we have, oh, we owe you the responsibility certainly to answer them, but it's, democracy is a participatory exercise, and it's gotta work both ways. And I will tell you that the greatest frustration I have had in, in now going on eight years as an elected official is getting the public to talk, getting that, that information flow both ways. Communication has been the greatest challenge that I've had, and I don't have any solutions to it. I mean, yes, we can put it online. I, I don't doubt that somewhere probably is online, but we put, I mean, if you wanna know when to put your trash out, it's online, but they still get calls at City Hall at the, the Public Service Building, saying, when do I put it out? So it, it's, it's a difficult proposition, and it's, it's frustrating. Champion Street. Dwell on this. When the people on the east side of the street built their homes, the people on the west side of the street lost their view. And I'm sure the people on the east side did not build a home maliciously. That was the place they built their home. So that process is one that always is evolving. But as Commissioner Hill mentioned, too, we've lost the major taxpayer in the city of Marquette. When We Energies went down, they left us a one million dollar a year hole in the budget. The only way you make that up is through taxes. The only way you have taxes is through some sort of development, pro or con, or up or down, or this or that. And what everybody on this commission, and I believe this truly, strains to try and figure out how to do, is how do we do that and still keep the values that we, as a city, think are so very important? How do you do that? How do you balance this and balance that? And that becomes a terrific challenge, and that's one that we all face. How do we hold on to what we, we really treasure and is important to us, knowing full well that we've gotta move away from some of those things if we're gonna keep the city alive and survive? So that becomes, again, my personal challenge, but certainly, I think, is one that all of us, to greater or lesser degree, mull over. How do we do that? I've rattled enough. Commissioner Hill?
Sorry, so I got so worked up, I actually had two other questions I wanted to bring up. One is, what's gonna happen to the stormwater on the site? And two is, I current, we, we were given drawings, which I, I don't know of these public.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so there's, there's drawings here of what's gonna happen with the Fairfield tow-in, although, right, no elevations, just bird's eye view looking down. I counted approximately a hundred and five parking spaces. Is that right? It's over, I have just, just over a hundred parking spaces.
Somewhere in that, yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's exactly what we need by, by the zone.
Right, so just, and then the buildings are actually gonna sit on, pretty, you know, pretty much, there's gonna be a sidewalk, and then they'll be on lake shore, the, the, the hotel space he's talking about. The corner closer to Bifaru and Farmer Q's is currently empty, and then i- in this drawing, and then the, there's a potential outline of, I guess those will be the townhomes closer to Father Marquette's side, Father Marquette statue side. And so, yeah, so the stormwater question, and then also, there has been talk about those townhomes being affordable. Is there anything we can also say at this point about that, given that it looks like the hotel's gonna happen first and the townhomes are gonna go second?
First of all, the stormwater. The site does have contaminants in it. It's an old rail yard, like all of Founder's Landing, you know, it's, it's brownfield site. We are not allowed to infiltrate, we must capture, but we've designed a system that basically holds it onsite. We've using really large diameter pipe under the parking lot, and the water goes into those, and then slowly metered into the city's system. So we're never putting in more than potentially comes off of it now. So it just, it's a retention system, but then, but we're not allowed to put it into because you would exacerbate the groundwater issues, so. And that's true on both, all, all three pieces.
Okay.
What was your other question?
Uh, the affordability of the townhomes.
Yes, that's, the affordability of the townhouses is, is a key. That's the market that identified, and we really, you know, feel, it's an important mix in the community, right? Every community needs everybody. So, so the target is to be somewhere starting below three hundred thousand, up to about three hundred and fifty thousand, somewhere in that target range is the, is the, is the market. And these will be sixteen, very small, little townhouses. That's the whole idea. There's, be like car and a half garages, so there's room for a small car and ten bikes. You know, that's sort of the demographic of the, the buyer. That's half of Marquette, right?
And that each townhome will be sold for between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Trying to get, get something in, entry even below that mark, but that is the, now, that, the challenge of that, of course, is the reality of what it costs to build in Marquette also. So, so that, in that project, the townhouses are going to be a little lag behind. The hotel is gonna start as soon as possible. The townhouses, you know, maybe start by fall, so. And those will be built for sales, so incrementally.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Commissioners, any other comments? All those commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
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 Those opposed to the motion, please signify by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes five zero. That brings us down to item set fifteen, which is the K-Front and Park Street Reconstruction Project. Mr. Clerk, please.
Thank you, sir. Plans have been developed for the package reconstruction project of K Avenue, Front Street, and Park Street in accordance with prior Planning Commission and City Commission approval, master plan, and capital improvement plan requirements. The work will consist of water main replacement and service work, sanitary sewer main replacement slash extension, replacement of sanitary sewer laterals, storm sewer main replacement slash extension, sidewalk replacement, reconstruction of the street structure, and the associated appurtenances per the plan limits. Plan limits are as follows. K Avenue from Third to Prescott Isle, Front Street from Magnetic to Park, and Park Street from Fourth to Lee. Bids for the project were opened on April eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. High contractors responded to our request for bids. One contractor's bid was incomplete and had to be dismissed. The results are summarized below. The engineer's estimate was written as one million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. The bid as written from Smith Construction was one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, and that bid was checked at the same amount. The bid from Associated Constructors LLC was one million, three hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents, and that bid was checked at one million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents. The bid from F.A. Industrial Services, Inc. was one million, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and one cent, and that bid was checked at the same amount. And the bid from Baco Construction was one million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-nine cents, and that bid was checked at the same amount. Tabulation and checking of the bids found errors on one contractor's bid. Errors were mathematical and had no bearing on the final outcome. Fiscal effect. The K Avenue, Front Street, and Park Street Reconstruction Projects were approved under the fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget. These projects will be part of the fiscal year two thousand nineteen bond package. Recommendation: Award a contract for the package reconstruction project of K Avenue, Front Street, and Park Street to Smith Construction, Inc. in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, based on the quantities and unit prices bid. Allow the city manager to use a ten percent contingency for any unknown circumstances. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Not too bad. Commissioners, your pleasure, please. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make a motion to award a contract for the package reconstruction project of K Avenue, Front Street, and Park Street to Smith Construction, Inc. in the amount of one million, two hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, based on quantities and prices bid. Allow the city manager to use a ten percent contingency for any unknown circumstances.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner Campana, further comments?
This is pretty cut and dry, and I think we're happy to see construction and improvement of some city streets and water lines being taken care of.
Commissioner Frazier?
Like Commissioner Campana said, just keep the streets going.
Any other commissioner? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five zero. That's item sixteen coming up now, license to use city right-of-way at six zero three North Third Street. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, sir. Be Kind LLC has submitted a license application to use a portion of the public right-of-way adjacent to the building for a new access ramp and concrete pad to be constructed for building access. The Department of Public Works and the Engineering Division of Community Development has concerns regarding all proposed encroachments into the right-of-way. Fiscal effect: An application fee of two hundred and twenty dollars was collected. No other fees apply.
Seventeen, okay.
Recommendation: Approve the application and direct the license to include language requiring the property owner to be responsible for maintenance and any replacement of the structure. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, your pleasure. Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the application and direct the license to include language requiring the property owner to be responsible for maintenance and any replacement of the structure.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
Second.
Mr. Frazier, comments? Mr. Schlegel? Any other commissioner? Seeing none? Oh, no, you're the next one up. Next one up, right? That's right. Uh, we have a motion in front of us. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five to zero. Item seventeen, license to use city right-of-way at twelve oh nine North Third Street. Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, sir. Symbiosis LLC has submitted an application for use of the public right-of-way adjacent to the building at twelve oh nine North Front, North Third Street for the expansion of the building facade and updates to the existing access ramp that had not previously been licensed. The Department of Public Works and the Engineering Division of Community Development has concerns regarding all proposed encroachments into the right-of-way. Fiscal effect: An application fee of two hundred and twenty dollars was collected. No other fees apply. Recommendation: Approve the application, as the improvements are being made to an existing encroachment, and direct the license to include language that requires the owner to be responsible for maintenance and replacement of the structure. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Good evening. I'm at Trito U.P. Engineers and Architects, Two Groveville Court. Basically, just a renovation of an existing facade in the existing Third Street right-of-way. I'm here to answer any questions or concerns of the commission.
Commissioners, any questions? Thank you. Commissioners, we have a motion in front of us. Your pleasure, please. Commissioner Campana?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the application as the improvements are being made to an existing encroachment and direct the license to include language that requires the owner to be responsible for maintenance and replacement of the structure.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
Commissioner, uh, Campana, further questions, further comments, rather?
I would like to see this done. As you drive by it, you can see that there's already a ramp, but it's not a good ramp, and the building looks a little worn, so it'd be kinda nice to fix it up.
Commissioner Frazier?
Like Commissioner Campana said, make the building better.
Commissioners, any other comments? Seeing none, all those commissioners in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed by no? Hearing none, motion passes five zero. That brings us down to item eighteen, Lighthouse Park Project Upgrades, and Mr. Clerk?
Thank you, sir. During the capital improvement plan and budget amendments in two thousand eighteen, it was approved by the City Commission to reallocate funds from the College Avenue Reconstruction Project toward other projects. The consensus was to hold off on any work on College Avenue until the hospital relocated, and it was determined what would be done with the old hospital site. Part of the reallocation was one million dollars towards a Lighthouse Enterprise Fund. This was to be used for any upgrades required on that property. On July thirty, two thousand eighteen, a multi-use pathway project was approved for the lighthouse area. This was packaged with other park-related projects. During the time of the approval and the anticipated start of the construction, the State Historic Preservation Office, SHIPO, denied letting the pathway go through the proposed route due through, due to the removal of a sanitary sewer pump house that was deemed historical. This decision by SHIPO delayed the project. Through the public process, it was decided to place the proposed pathway in a new location. The pathway was redesigned over the winter of two thousand nineteen with other upgrades required for the lighthouse area. Other upgrades include an Arch Street extension, a museum drive with parking, Lighthouse Park parking, utility upgrades, and stormwater management and control. Due to the original contractor not being allowed to complete the project last year, the City Commission is being asked to allow the contractor to finish the project in two thousand nineteen, along with the other upgrades. The total cost of the project, as proposed by Oberstar, Inc., is six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents. This is very close to the engineer's estimate of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Fiscal effect: The Lighthouse Enterprise Fund had one million dollars placed for the Lighthouse Park upgrades. Sufficient funds are available to cover the multi-use pathway and other upgrades as mentioned in the prior background statement. Recommendation: Waive the normal bidding process and approve the multi-use pathway, additional work, and funding for the Lighthouse Park Project upgrades in the amount of six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-five cents to Oberstar, Inc., based on the quantities and unit prices. Allow the city manager to use a twenty percent contingency for any unknown circumstances. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Mr. Verdo, you had requested time.
Frank Javertoe? This is not what we wanted, and not what a majority of our Planning Commission wanted either. As heard February twenty-fifth, quote, "The Planning Commission finds that the proposed plan does not fit the character and extent of the neighborhood or fit with the community master plan and denies approval of the project." Sadly, our city staff disregarded this recommendation, as well as input at a work session, many public comments, and even the nearby residents who knew the area best. The drawing plainly depicts how the proposal will tarnish the neighborhood character, largely to provide nine parking spots for the Maritime Museum, which Mr. Stonehouse is associated with. He was never accused of financial gain, but of having influence. That's the bottom line. To facilitate those nine spaces is an oval loop with a tight turn at the south end. As evident on the drawing, it's unfair to the rest of us how much of the million dollars that was diverted from College Avenue is going toward the museum. It's not part of our park. This would eliminate much of the wooded buffer between our new park and the treatment plant, exposing the giant, ugly rectangular box. It appears room can be made for a trail along the current road, or revisit the idea of an eight-foot-wide trail between the old headquarters and the pump house. Work more diligently with the Historic Preservation Group. You're asked to better visualize how this proposal would impact the character of this critical lake shore segment. Our staff is thanked for recognizing the value of the ancient oaks. This is, however, no excuse to propose covering a critical corner of our lake shore district with asphalt on top of asphalt and wiping out the buffer of trees that serves to enhance the entrance to our new park. Give the Maritime Museum their nine spaces- Give the Maritime Museum their nine spaces, which can be accessed by the current road. Cars can back out from these spaces just as conveniently and leave the way they entered. That loop of asphalt is unnecessary and suggests our latest example of someone being so fixated on a cause that he lost sight of the forest through the trees. The maritime space is better used for future outdoor exhibits and room for plowed snow. Members who are able to read a drawing will see how my alternatives keep more of our public space pervious. It's ridiculous to compromise our wooded buffer for nine parking stalls when there's a better option. Why does our public continue not to be heard? And in this case, the planning commission also.
Commissioners, what is your pleasure? Commissioner Frazier?
I'll take the hall. Okay. With the normal bidding, I make a motion to to waive the normal bidding process and approve the multi-use pathway to show work and funding for the Lighthouse Park Project upgrades in the amount of six eighty-six, three thirty-one point seven five to Oberstar Incorporated. Based on the quantities and unit prices, allow the city manager to use a twenty percent contingency for any unknown circumstances.
Is there a second? Commissioner Schlegel?
I'd second.
Mr. Frazier, further comments?
I think a lot of the money is going towards the park, not the museum parking spots. The museum parking spots will be included in the park, but the money is going towards redoing the park that we own now, the Coast Guard let us have. It would be great, greatly used there, everybody can enjoy the area, not just the Maritime Museum. Everybody can enjoy the area. And it's like about blacktopping the area right now because it's gravel. And we had the problem with, I was in the Pipe Pack Committee, Presque Isle, and the road between the playground and the ban shell has been gravel for years, it's been eroded and bumpy all the time. So a little bit of blacktop, you know, put down will help keep it from eroding and all the waters to channel into drains or into the water.
Commissioner Schlegel? None further. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Campana?
Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, I dislike that the mayor is being accused of having influence on this, he is totally impartial to this project and he votes the way the mayor should vote. This route, I am in favor of, or this project I'm in favor of because it was put forth by our staff with their recommendation and their engineering. You just can't put in a bike path wherever you want, it has to be engineered, it has to meet standards, and our staff has come up with probably the only way we can do it. So I have to go along with their recommendation. This will be a good project and I believe that most people will want to see it or wanted it, are going to have it the way they wanted it. So I'm all in favor of this, thank you.
Commissioners, any other comments? Let me make one, then. And let me just say this. That the opportunity to have a park on the historic grounds of the Lighthouse Station and the Life Saving Station and the old Coast Guard Station is remarkable. There are very few of these left anywhere on the Great Lakes, this is the oldest station house, in fact, still on Lake Superior. There are not many of them nationally either, especially not ones that have become a city park and are open to everybody and are not maintained as some sort of a private home or private complex or 501(c)(3) that denies access to them. This is a very special opportunity for the city of Marquette. The accusations made that somehow I am benefiting from it or somehow have made it all happen is nothing but incredible falsehoods. As I think you'll find from anybody that you speak with that really understands the system, not the system, but really just understands what's going on and the good that will do the community. That's it. Commissioners, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please indicate by saying no. Hearing none, motion passes five zero, that brings us to public comments. Comments not to exceed three minutes per person, please state your name and physical address when making comments.
Hi, Colleen Roberts. Nine oh three Adams Street, I didn't think I'd come up here again, but I got to tell you, I'm embarrassed by you all tonight, okay? I'm tired of five zeros, I'm tired of seven zeros. I'm tired of people coming in here with their minds already made up. Yes, somebody can't see the lake through a window, and that's not your problem, but yet you tell us that we're going to be a million dollars in debt. Then you tell us, "We bought that Hartwood Place for five million dollars." "Oh, but that's for all of you to use for exercise and adventure." Well, you know what? I have never met so many like-minded people that think the same way on the same board. It's like, let's have some discussion or take turns voting no or something? Because honest to God, what do you think the people watching TV think? Now, I waited until the publicity people were gone, so this is not going to show up in the paper, but I got to tell you, step up. Honestly, people, step up, do your homework. You're elected by the citizens of Marquette, and it's not just money. Don't prostitute Marquette. And yeah, I'm a little upset. So I really don't have a lot to say, but I hope you think about it when you go home. You know, I know you don't make these decisions lightly, but yet, this is a destination community and we're losing our destination. What are we going to do then? We're landlocked. So think forward, not just, "We're going to build a hotel." "Oh, we'll get a million dollars for it." Okay, so when we lose our destination and when we lose all the, all the things that people come here for because we're trading them off, what will be left? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Matt Luttenberger, fourteen oh six Garfield Ave, here in the city of Marquette. And by all means, please listen to her, she speaks the truth here. Three weeks went by since our last meeting and a lot of things happened, I got wiser, got a little wealthier and a little more worldly. Enough about me, I, I learned here that in the previous three weeks, you had a vote on the pier and whether or not it was going to affect a private business called Dockside Marine. At the time, Mr. Frazier, you, you pointed out that Dockside Marine doesn't have anything to do with the pier and there's no reason for them to have any input. I bring this up because in those three weeks, it turned out that your family owns a boat, a dock storage in itself, a boat storage in itself. So I come up to you to speak about the difference between bias and conflict of interest. And our counsel has already pointed out that conflict of interest is really, really difficult to set up. And in fact, Mr. Mayor, I, I know the whole thing about the Lighthouse property, I remember when you were on the board and proposed it for a dollar to buy it from the U.S. Coast Guard. The point is, you don't make any money in the city of Marquette, so you won't have a conflict of interest. You will, however, have a bias, and bias is not illegal. And I mean that, you are all elected because of your biases. I mean, I hope you put your bias into the actual job that you're doing, and you have, you've shown that. I will admit, though, a five-zero vote is always frustrating. So my, my point here becomes the fine line between talking about a bias and saying that, Mr. Stonehouse, you have not approved any projects that are west of Third Street or Fifth Street or Seventh Street or Lincoln Ave. The fact that we're taking money from College Ave and putting into a near lakeshore project without recompensating College Ave. We still don't know when that's going to be repaired. The fact is, you put a million dollars away into a fund for two years, how much, how much interest did that fund make? Can that money be put towards these other projects to minimize the concept of having a bias? I bring up and I stop at the bias here because for Lakeshore Drive, you've pointed out that there's going to be a committee, a three-person committee for the, the project. And that's very similar to what happened to the NTN and what's going on at Hartwood Forest. So, lastly, Hartwood Forest, all those trees were felled by SNCO, who gets those trees? Do we as a city, does NTN get to build their new, their new, what you call it, shop out of it? And in that sense, are you ever going to fix the tables down at Lakeview Arena? You've been asked three months ago and they're still the, the bad ones, anyways, I'm out.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Good evening, my name is Dick Hennessy, I live at nine oh five Champion Street. My wife's family have been residents of Champion Street for a hundred and ten years. A lot has gone on tonight, I did not make comment during the action item that you had, mainly because it was well-known on the street that the deal's already cooked and it's a done deal. And that unfortunately is the reputation that this body in the city has. And it's not good. You shouldn't have that type of a reputation in the community. I'm not saying that you make the wrong decisions, I'm not saying that they're bad decisions in the end, but your public outreach is deplorable. Putting something on the internet and expecting people to scramble through to figure out and try to pick out what relates to them is not providing information. I served on a village commission for over three years. I've served on planning commissions, zoning commissions in the lower peninsula of Michigan. It was a smaller community, but was in an area that was every bit as complex as this one. Include a six-hundred-acre lake and over seven hundred households on that lake. So I know what it is that you're going through, I know how difficult the job is, but at the same time, when potentially impacted property owners near a project are not provided with a letter informing them that there are important zoning approvals, when the planning commission, your planning commission, asks you and recommends that you approve an agreement with a developer and you don't have elevations, you don't have surveys, you don't know what the project is, you got a copy of an elevate, of an aerial view of some sort of a rendition that I guarantee not one person here knows how high those buildings will be. Not one person here knows that. And you approved it. You know, I probably would have approved it had I been in your position too because this is kind of the norm for Marquette. And you need to up your game. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Lynn Barry, nine oh one Champion. I appreciate the work you do, but I heartily concur, there has to be more opportunities for the public to know what's happening and looking on the internet and finding about things, sometimes it's in the newspaper, if you get the newspaper, the same evening and maybe you haven't read the newspaper yet. So, Mr. Stonehouse, as he doesn't know the answer, but I think it should be a project that you look for a better way to incorporate public policy. We, I understand, have a lean city administration. But that, you know, you really should know more than an aerial view of the project you're approving, honestly. I do believe that. And unrelated things, I know you work hard, but when the recycling idea came up, I'm like, eight percent recycling really stinks, so efforts to improve that is great. The millage, I understand Mr. Campana's concern. My problem with millages is, and, and I don't think I'm the only tax-tired person around, is that you say, "We'll get a millage and it'll last ten years," and then it's done, but then we get millage renewal requests and that's, just as soon, if you're going to do a project, will this system be self-sustaining after four years? I didn't really understand that from the, the information given. Okay? So I would like that to be part of your inquiries. And the video system, RFP, the only question I had is a little bit similar. You're going to borrow from Peter to pay Paul over the next five years for new video for public consumption of what's happening. But at the end of five years, I hope you don't have to borrow from Peter to pay Paul to do something similar again, that the lifetime of this project will be longer. Okay, and I thank you very much.
Anyone else to address the commission?
Frank Javertoe, these are my opinions. April eighth, Mr. Frazier rebutted my comment by saying his great-grandfather did a lot for our city, as if that justifies Mr. Frazier's lying about a person who some feel also has done a lot for our city. Not to compare myself with the founding father, but being related to one doesn't make Mr. Frazier any better. He actually had the arrogance to play that card. He actually played that card.
Mr. Verto, I'm going to stop you right now. We will not tolerate personal attacks on any commissioner. If you wish to comment on the issues, please do so.
Consult your attorney.
I am stopping it right now, Mr. Verto, unless you will act in a civil manner and not attack city commissioners.
That is so stupid to suggest he's either righter or better for what his grandpa did. One thing I can do better than anyone is detect the stink of that privileged mentality. How? Because I grew up similarly. But despite my dad's success in Milwaukee, I knew even as a child that this made me no better. It's true, Mr. Frazier himself has done a lot of nice things for our city and he likely works hard to maintain all he was given, but that gives him no right to discount someone else. Of course, he's one hot item who at least up to then believed he could say and do as he pleased without repercussion because of who his grandfather was. People may ask why two boathouse fiascos from three years ago keep bearing repetition now. Two reasons. Ms. Reynolds and Mr. Frazier brought it up, but more importantly for the public at large, a third boathouse proposal slipped its way into our north pier project. Although mentioned in the document, it appears sneaked in, so reminiscent of the deception inherent to the previous proposals. The supplement states the ideas were gathered through public input, but we know that a certain club played a role, hoping to build a largely private boathouse on public property for a third time. Twice the membership of official, the membership officials' wives in that club allegedly influenced the votes. First, a boathouse was approved just south of Gaines Rock at the most gorgeous wooded spot south of Presque Isle, a decision so stupid this board's own cohorts threatened to sue. It's one of the few times political influence worked to the public advantage. This board backed out like scared rabbits instead of approving a boathouse at a location, instead approving a boathouse at a location that I'd recommended. The trouble is, the building was enlarged with extra space for seven parking spots and a work area. Thank God they couldn't procure the funding, likely a result of the deceptive way they went about business, sneaking in those design changes, telling the public only what they wanted us to hear and refusing to address the opposing argument. So what are we to think when a boathouse suddenly appears in our north pier proposal at a spot where it would block the view from our fancy boardwalk and the foot of the pier? They seem fine with using coastal grant funds to build their eighty-five percent private boathouse. Why it wasn't incorporated into that new building next door as hoped remains a mystery. And my time was cut off earlier. Nearly all these comments demonstrate my sincere love for our city.
Verto, your time is up. Thank you.
You interrupted my time, this is, this was not-
Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Commissioners, comments, Mr. Campana, if you would start, please.
Thank you, Your Honor, I, long meeting, but I don't have much, just, we did, we accomplished a lot tonight, I, we sold about three properties and that's good. And we got approved four projects, which also is good. There's a question about the tipping fee, if we, if that's the way that the landfill should generate money to pay back their bond debt. And I was told by the chair of the landfill that if they do go with the tipping fee and they- of the landfill that if they do go with the tipping fee and they collect it, and after a period, say, three, four years, they have enough money to pay off the bond debt, they'll drop the, uh, tipping fee. So, as opposed to a millage, like, yeah, it could go on and on and on, if they do institute the tipping fee, it'll be just until they pay off the bond debt. So, I kinda like that idea. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Fraser?
Fun meeting, long meeting, a lot of stuff going on. Just some of my people, founders, I think it was just, as I grew up, it was just a railroad yard before, you know, certain people liked to comment, not the people from Champion Street, but people that are on the other side of town complaining about the area. It was a railroad yard, like Mr., like Commissioner Campana and so on have said, it's just a railroad yard. When I was a kid, I just got on play, the railroad yard, trains up and down the lake, and imagine that nowadays, if somebody, if the city would approve a train going up down Lake Shore Boulevard instead of bike path, people would be all up in arms, people upset. Back in the day, that was just normal. Same with all of Lower Harbor, it was all industry back then. And everyone person say, well, I like it better back then. Why? 'Cause it was all industrial. It was part of Marquette. That's how Marquette was born, industrial. Now, folks has gotten away from Lower Harbor, gone towards, you know, up the hill, but that's what Marquette is. And as far as money going towards Light House Park, it's gonna be a community for everybody, somebody every community enjoy, which I like, the fact that it's like Mr. Stonehouse said, part of the, the Coast Guard Station, everybody can enjoy it, everybody will use it. The money's going towards that because if we were to put the money into College Avenue, just another road, be fixed up, be good for a couple of years, then maybe fall, but if we fix up, put the money, who knows what's going on with the hospital? They could be digging up the road, could be knocking down buildings, bringing in equipment. The road could get damaged, it'll be a, a waste of money, so that, that's why they're doing that. As far as my business and, um, dock side marine, two different businesses, my parents' business, just storage boat, dock submarine repairs, and man, works on boats, two different businesses in two different parts of the community. One's on one side of the rock, the other's on the other side of the rock, two different areas, and this will actually not affect his business at all. To be a dock out there, people park their boats on, it won't affect his business at all, 'cause just actually make more people parking down, it actually hurts his business a lot, 'cause hurt parking for his area, it actually hurts his little business a lot. But it's fine, you'll be able to, it's basically a community-owned event. Dock's not private, so it could be owned just by him, be for everybody can use. Anybody that wants to walk out there, dock out there, everyone's user can use it. Um, I'm sorry, you know, people feel bad at Champion Street, you know, Founder's Landing was sold to be developed, and we all know it's gonna be developed eventually. I know, I used to live on Lake Shore Boulevard, they buried the power lines all the way up to the marina, and they're gonna continue burying the power lines all the way across the lake, and they stopped, 'cause they put the money into Founder's Landing instead. And I was disappointed about that, but it's okay, Founder's Landing get developed, it's fine. And, but we have to look at options, you know? I'm not a tax revenue expert like our, like Gary is, Mr. Simpson, our guy that goes all, all the money about everything that's going on, but I guess we have to look at options. We can either sell property for money, or we can raise people's taxes. I mean, I don't think people on Champion Street wanna be paying more taxes like everybody else. I mean, I don't know what, what if they're, increase everybody's taxes, like ten, fifty percent to make up a million bucks? I don't know what it has to be, but be a lot of money, and I don't want my taxes to go up, and nobody else's taxes go up, so that's just a tough way to look at. And, you know, it's unfortunate, but see, and the founders, still be open, people, you can still drive through there and see the lake. It has to be viewed from, from the highway or from Champion Street, but people could still drive down the lake, all the way into Marquette, view of the lake is beautiful, that won't change, and the view from Founder's Landing, all the way to Presque Isle, will not change. There's still be the see the lake on the right-hand side, maybe some property development on the, on the left-hand side of the road going out to Presque Isle, but the right-hand side along the lake will always be open. We've been told that many times, that's part of, you know, state land, it's gonna be a state, they're gonna redevelop the road, but it'll be better, redevelop for everybody.
All right. Long meeting, I've got a couple, um, things outside of today's meeting, I just wanna raise people's awareness of, and then I wanna say, comment about this evening. Yesterday was, April twenty-eighth was Worker Remembrance Day for folks who were, um, hurt or killed in the doing of their job. There's an event every year in Nagone. Unfortunately, the way our city, uh, calendar went this year, we weren't able to commemorate that as a community, but I am hoping that next year we'll be able to do that, and, um, it's important to, um, think of the folks who have, um, were doing their jobs and, um, gave a sacrifice. I wanted to mention that. Um, I also was asked by community members, there's a group of community members who are concerned about the circus that's coming into town, and there are folks who are, would be interested in having an animal-free circus. Um, there's a group of people organizing around that. If you're interested, I can put you in touch with them, um, and you can learn more about those efforts. Um, in addition, um, on the strictly city level, the compost area and, uh, landfill, or I don't know if the right, landfill's not the right word, dump's probably not the right word either, but anyway, you can go take stuff you don't want over to Pioneer Road. Rubbish, thank you. And, um, rubbish, sounds very British to me. So, uh, you can, uh, there's a, um, calendar up on the website, as I say, but I did have a, a constituent ask, how do renters who may not pay a water bill access the facilities? If, does anyone, if you know the answer to that?
If your landlord signs off on it, your landlord gives them a, goes into the city and says so-and-so can go.
Ah, thank you. Great. All right. So, uh, I, now I know the answer to that, thank you. So, now, um, if you're a renter, you can also use that space, you just need to have your landlord sign off that you can use the rubbish and compost. And, let's see. Coming up, we have meetings Monday, May sixth to talk about marijuana, and on Tuesday, May seventh, to have decisions on what's gonna happen with Lake Shore Boulevard and the reconstruction project happening over there. That's next week, hope you can join us. They'll both be here in City Hall at five fifteen or five o'clock. And then, about tonight, um, uh, I don't think anyone's gonna say that three hundred thousand dollars is affordable, but here we are. And so, know that once we get past the meetings next week, I am very, very committed to working on these housing issues. It's a national problem in our country, but I do think that we need to have many points of view come and talk about why we're in the situation that we're in and what we can do about it. It's a very confounding thing. Um, I know that's, and so I'll just leave that there, but we certainly need to start having this conversation about who, how we can build more housing so more people can live here and afford to live here at all levels. And then finally, um, on voting tonight on the project on Founder's Two, it's, the, one of the reasons I got so fired up tonight is that there is a process, and that there are rules, and that these rules were set about what these buildings could do literally years ago. And so, voting yes meant that we knew that it was meeting the, the baseline of the law. And I, and, and it, that, and I know that it does. Is it a vision that we want for our community? That's a different question. And that question gets addressed earlier in the process at the planning commission level. So, those planning commission meetings are really, really important, and when I say we can do a better job of explaining the process, we need to have that, that whole timeline put out, and, and then people can see, oh, that's, that's how these things all come together, to be clear. And I'd be happy to put that in writing so that people can understand what we're, what I, and, and start to get comments on that, because we are doing, we can do a better job, and it's, it's a matter of not, if not, someone taking the time to piece together the information to put it all in one place. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, busy evening tonight. Again, it was great to be able to celebrate the Marquette Junior Hockey, uh, UA team. Um, I gotta say, I don't think we're gonna, uh, gonna have any trouble winning any hockey games in the next few years with all the great talent that's coming up. Appreciate the kids and the parents and the, uh, and the coaches that put the time and effort into getting those kids to the ice at seven in the morning on Saturdays and then even Sundays, um, traveling and all the, all the hard work that goes into that. It's a, it's a very important part of our community and our region, and, uh, I just, it's nice to walk around and brag a little bit about how the, uh, programs are, are doing so well. The, uh, Marquette County Landfill Authority and the work that they've put in, Brad and his team over there, and the, uh, the authority with, uh, Chairman Yell, this is something that, uh, like they said, you know, eighteen, twenty-four months ago, when, when the whole, uh, glass recycling issue came to light, uh, was a very tough one for all of us to swallow. And to think that we have an option, um, in that short period of time to be doing reuse or repurposing of that, uh, that, uh, the glass especially is, is very exciting, um, to think about, let alone the fact that we're going to be a regional, um, hub for recycling for the entire UP, which, um, I don't think we've quite grasped the importance of that, that topic yet. So, we need to, uh, follow this and, and, uh, I think be prepared for, um, greater things than what we're hearing thus far. Um, Founder's is tough. It's one of the reasons why I got involved in other advisory roles, because I didn't like when the developers went down there and all of a sudden there was an extra cap on top of something that people understood was the original building point, and then when that cap was applied, because of whatever reason, I'm not gonna go back and, and, and beat up history any more than, uh, has been done tonight, but when that cap was applied, all of a sudden, the rooftops came up to a level that was higher than expectations were, were originally said, and, and if they had that, if that had not happened, I feel that people would look very differently on those, uh, on the developments along Founder's. Um, I look at everything that's happened around the, uh, Lower Harbor Park, and I think of the, the hundred and plus yards between those developments and, and, uh, the lake, and I, I think that nobody really complains about those. But unfortunately, there are people that have built or have history, um, and I, I feel for those people in, in the background, uh, whether it's Champion or other areas of our, our area, but we are a community that needs to develop some property properly, and, uh, knowing that, that they will be abiding by all of the codes set forth by the city, um, is the best that I can hope for right now. Um, I'm not the guy that has the money to develop those places. I'm not the guy that has an architect that, uh, knows darn well what the multiple developments that he's done, how the people can think year in, year out, project in, project out. He knows what's going on. He's gonna push his limits, he's gonna put, you know, make it as, as tall as he can without, uh, offending the rules, or bending the rules, let's put it that way. I just wish that somebody would, would be able to come in and go, you know what? Let's, let's just go with a two-story development, but it's all money, and unfortunately, um, it is what it is right now. So, I'm gonna be swallowing this one for a long time. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, let me, uh, let me just cover, cover a few things here. You know, why do we have five O's votes for the whole session? 'Cause we had five people here. I mean, but, the real background to that is that each commissioner receives a very heavy packet of information prior to the meeting, and if you take the time to go through the information and you understand it, uh, then there often isn't really much adversarial discussion that will occur. And it's when you have a number of things on the agenda that are kind of the grind of government, not issues that are in themselves engender great discussion, you do have a number of instances where you will have five O's. I will say, this is the only time I could ever recall a meeting where we've had everyone come through as the same vote. Invariably, there's a difference to it, but I'm assuring people that nobody had collusion here, it just was one of those odd things that, that occurred. Um, big issue we face on the city is obviously the tax base. You can roll that back to fifty-five percent of the city of Marquette, give or take, that is tax-free. These are all nonprofits. These are city parks, these are marinas, these are churches, schools, government institutions, Northern Michigan University. More typical for a Michigan city is somewhere around twenty percent. So, when all of a sudden you're trying to float the entire city, literally on forty-five percent of the tax possibility, tax base, you're in trouble. And we have been that way for a very long time. So, every time we add a new park, every time we add something like that, um, we lose tax base, in effect, and we lose the ability to pay for the services that are critical for the city. So, when we look at project opportunities like Parcel Two, and as many of the commissioners have mentioned, Commissioner Hill particularly, that this was set long ago, and indeed it was, and it's been a slowly developing project over time based on the standards applied at that time and upgraded as we went along. There's been nothing strange, if you will, or, I guess unlawful, that occurred beyond our, our complaint about the size of, of the buildings on Parcel One. Question for city manager, however, would be, I'm presuming that Parcel Two will have to be developed in accordance with the New Land Development Code.
Yes, but I feel, I still think it has the, uh, form-based code that's, that was in place.
I mean, does not the form-based, yeah, does not the New Land Development Code account for that area, or is that still under four, under the waterfront code?
You know, I don't know, I can get you the answer to that, but I, I believe it's, it's still primarily the, uh, the form-based code that was originally there, cause, three or four years ago.
I mean, I'm going back to the discussion we had during the adoption of form-based code, when we got into the issue of how high a building could be and how they were measured. And, uh, again, if, if you could check that, I think that would be, that would be a really, really good thing. Uh, certainly, we would want to strictly enforce any, any code applications, absolutely. Comment made about Marquette becoming another Traverse City. I think we have to get real. And the reality is Traverse City is Traverse City because they are somewhere around four and a half hours out of Detroit, which means you could quit work on Friday night, get in the car, and be at TC before midnight. Hence, that's where the great population boom occurred in Detroit, that's why, or rather, in Traverse City, that's why it became what we know today, because of its proximity via the interstate system to Metro Detroit. That's what happened. And the way Traverse City sold its soul by literally taking all access to Lake Shore away, arguably speaking, uh, is that the, the stone around their neck that they have now, and if you meet somebody from Traverse City and city government and make that comment to them, you can see them ver- just blanch, 'cause they know that they, they really managed to foul that one up badly. So, Marquette may certainly have built some higher buildings, but the lakefront, the lake access, the ability to touch and be in the water is certainly all available. Comments made about hotels being built? You can't build what people don't want. You can't build where the, build where demand is not, and the people that are investing the money in the hotels and in that type of development certainly have done their studies, their due diligence to say, there's a market here, and here's the market, and that's why you're seeing that project, as opposed to somebody building a Burger King, for example. Um, the city doesn't really control that. Last thing I would leave you with is that the circus is in town again. We certainly have people that are protesting against the animals appearing in the circus. I've had several of them contact me, and I've advised them to go to the county commission, because if somebody's gonna ban something, it's gotta be done on a county basis to be effective, and the county commission really would have that responsibility, because they manage the same type of situations out with the county fair and the animal husbandry activities that occur there. So, it's not a city of Marquette issue, it's a county issue, and the county board needs to take that on and determine what they want to do with it, make that decision, as opposed to saying, city of Marquette, you solve all the problems in the county. We really can't do that. I have nothing more. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you all commissioners for your support again tonight. Um, I will touch on a couple of things, and then, uh, I'll let you go for the night, but first of all, to get back to one of the questions, the trees that were related to the, uh, the gas line that's being cleared in Founder's Landing, we, we get those trees. They are being cut to length- They are being cut to length, about eight-foot lengths, and stacked, and then at some point in the future, we are going to decide what to do with them. I want to reiterate the points made by Commissioner Hill, or the meetings, by Commissioner Hill on May sixth, we'll be meeting here to discuss the future of marijuana in the city. And on May seventh, it's a special meeting to discuss Lake Shore Boulevard. The reason it's a special meeting is because these decisions need to be made in a timely fashion. And sometimes it's hard to get seven commissioners together all at the same time, we only have two meetings a month, and sometimes this work needs to be done in a quicker fashion, and maybe it's sometimes just me doing things the way I do things. But it is a special meeting, there's no smoke and mirrors, there's no reason, it's not out there to hide it from anybody. If anybody has any interest in Lake Shore Boulevard, you have to be watching. That meeting will be advertised in our normal process, as well as we mentioning tonight. I'll also mention, even though it's a week away or over a week away, I have community office hours on Wednesday, May eighth. It's before our next commission meeting, but it's the May eighth, it's a Wednesday, it's at ten o'clock a.m. in the Peter White Public Library. And just to comment on the situation with the hotels and the development at Marquette, and I can't overemphasize or agree with a lot of the comments that have been made already. We are well over fifty percent non-taxable in the city. It costs a lot of money to run this city. There's a lot of services that this community has come to expect and enjoy, and for us to do that, we need to raise revenue. And the only way we could do that without raising individual property taxes is to develop property. We have a limited amount of property, and we can only develop so far. And I think it's safe for me to say that, you know, other than the occasional businesses that is closing, like Shopko, the property that the city owns, we are nearing the pinnacle of addressing all of those properties. So I don't know that there's a whole lot more out there. But as a city manager and a lifelong resident of Marquette, I too suffer through the balancing act of keeping the city the way we want it to be, the way I knew it to be, the way I grew up with, while at the same time growing it, stabilizing it financially, and providing the services that I know this community deserves. So the thought, the attitude is not lost on me, and I certainly understand some of these comments from some of the people, but trust me, we're not going down any path that's truly gonna change our identity. Thank you.
Before I hit the gavel, the point was made tonight by Commissioner Hill, and I think it was seconded by other commissioners too, and I would be very strongly in favor of it. We need to figure out a better way of having a communication link to all of the citizens. We need to have a better way to do that. And I'm not sure what that better way is. My thought might be something taking off on a CPM, a Critical Path Network, that would show a project and how it goes through various stages, and when those things occurred, and what we anticipate in the future. But doing that would mean it's gonna have to be on a PC base, so, which means some degree of computer literacy on the side of the user, at least be able to go in, open the page, and then follow the process. I feel strongly that we need to figure out how to do that. Not an instant fix, it's gonna take some time, but we owe it to our citizens and ourselves to be able to have that background and that future forecast of what actions can be anticipated. That said, we adjourned.